Alderman, ladies and gentlemen, now please stand the mayor of the city of Clarence, Alderman Becksman.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you very much. I'd like to commence proceedings tonight by asking the general manager to say the council prayer.
Almighty God, we humbly beseech thee to about sake thy blessing upon this council, direct in prosper its deliberations to the advancement of thy glory and the true welfare of the people of the city of Clarence. Amen.
Thank you. Before proceeding, I'd like to acknowledge the Tasmanian Aboriginal community as the traditional custodians of the land that we're meeting on tonight. We pay respects to elders past and present. I'd like to also remind everyone that the meeting is being recorded audio visually and will be available on the council website later this week. Thank you. I declare the meeting open and note that there are no apologies. Item two is confirmation of minutes for the eighteenth of March, and the special council meeting for the twenty-fifth of March as circulated will be taken as read and confirmed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Seconded, Alderman Von Berto. All those in favour? Against, carried. There's nothing to report at item three. Moving on to item four, the council notes the workshops conducted on the twenty-fifth of March, first of April, and the agenda brief on the fifth of April. Thank you, Alderman Warren. Seconded, Alderman Kendy. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Item five, declarations of interest of Alderman or close associate. Alderman Walker.
Your worship, eleven point seven point one.
Sorry, eleven point seven point one. Thank you. Are there any others, please? Alderman Chong.
Yeah, also eleven point seven point one.
Thank you. There being no other declarations. Item six, tabling of petition. General manager.
Three, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I have a petition containing one thousand five hundred and fifteen names requesting a roundabout at the South Arm Highway stroke Acton Road intersection to improve safety. I table it as a complying petition, albeit as an electronic petition. I do have some question as to how the recent amendments to the local government act should be interpreted in relation to electronic submissions petitions, but nonetheless, I do table it and will be reported to a subsequent council meeting.
Thank you. Pardon me. Are there any other petitions from the floor? Thank you. Item seven, seven point one and two, public questions on notice and answers questions on notice, there are none. Seven point three, there's an answer to a previous question on notice, taking it from Mr. Fig. The re... General manager?
Mr. Mayor, as it's put in the agenda, I'll just take it as read in the agenda.
Thank you. Are there any questions from members of the public without notice? Thank you. If you could come forward to ask the question, please. If people are asking questions, could start off with their name and address, please.
My name's Joanne Marsh, and I live at thirty-two A King Street, Belgrade. There are a number of vehicles repeatedly entering Belgrade Beach Park, causing compression damage to the so-called grassed areas of the park. These include very heavy vehicles which now appear to be required to service the problematic light towers. I've been informed by Mayor Chipman, dated the fourteenth of January two thousand nineteen, that the Clarence City Council has allocated funding in the annual operating plan two thousand eighteen nineteen to design and install an irrigation system within the grassed areas of Belgrade Beach Park. It's anticipated this work will occur within the next two months. My question is, what is the current status of this plan, as the condition of Belgrade Beach Park is a disgrace to the city of Clarence?
We are in a position to answer that question at the moment. Mr. Gray?
May I take that on notice?
Thank you, Mrs. Marsh. There'll be an answer in the agenda papers for the next council meeting.
Thank you.
Any other questions from members of the public?
Thank you firstly, Michael Fig, Lordordale. Thank you for the answer to one of the questions. There was actually five in the last meeting we had here, and I'll table them for the secretaries, so it makes life a little bit easier. But the questions related to a development application that was in... development application that was in front of council. And we asked, one of the questions was, why wasn't there any mention of significant fauna and flora and soil types, as there were on the list, a number of items in that area, if not directly on the site? Also, we asked about the stormwater drain which goes down the side, and the question hasn't been answered, so I'll ask it again. The stormwater that actually goes down the side of the hall and goes into a drain overflows, and if you remember the photographs I showed you, it was after a drop of three inches of water at the last meeting. When is that drain going to be compliant and not overflow into other people's property? The other question was in relation to the whole stormwater in Lordordale, and when is that going to be compliant with the Act? Table those questions.
Thank you, Mr. Fig. Well, there will be an answer. Maybe it'll have to be in the next... we'll take that on notice, but now that you've sharpened the questions, we'll try and sharpen the answer.
Thank you. Let's hope so. Secret.
Any other questions from members of the public?
Sachi Yasuda, Melana Road, Lindisfarne. Just for the number of people who come to each and every council meeting, there still seem to be considerable issues with the audio, and it seems to be more echoey. I'm just wondering if there's an update on the AV and with the consultant that was looking into it.
Three, Mr. Mayor. This question's been raised on a number of times. We've had consultants in here on a number of occasions, and you may notice that there's actually a different configuration of speakers that has been undertaken, and as far as the acoustics go within the room, we're advised that what we've got at the moment, given the acoustics of the room, is about as good as it's going to get.
Followed up. Three, Mr. Mayor, please. We've had the acoustic consultants in on probably four or five occasions in the last ten weeks, along those lines. They've done a lot of work in terms of this, and I don't know without spending huge amounts of money whether you're going to get the acoustics much better given the configuration of the room.
That's supplementary to that, then. Is there perhaps a chance for people in the chamber to maybe speak a little bit louder? Because I think that might help with some of the projection into the back of the gallery.
Thank you. We shall try to do so.
Fabulous. Thank you.
I'll be to help on that front. Just a moment. Just a second. There was a comment in the gallery that they can't hear the speakers at all there. So is it a volume thing on those speakers? Perhaps we could tweak that?
There are volume controls, but they are set.
Yeah, it can be adjusted slightly, but it's at a point where if we increase it much more, we start getting a lot of feedback.
Okay. Look, we understand that it's still a problem, and we will continue to try and find it. I think we do need to find a solution. I understand that. Any other questions from members of the public? Thank you. Item eight is deputations from members of the public. There are two aspects here. There are four individual deputations, but there's also what's known in the meeting regs as another group deputation as well. General manager?
Mr. Mayor, in a particular order, do you wish to... either the group or the other one first?
Look, the individual ones first.
Firstly, I could have Trent Fenton of Sanford, who wishes to address council in relation to application for a shared kennel licence. If you could come forward.
While coming forward, I do need to remind speakers that there's an opportunity for a three-minute window, and there'll be a tone at the end of the three minutes. Sorry, two and a half minutes, thirty seconds to go to wind up.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Trent Fenton, eighty-nine Jermaine Court, Sanford. I did write it down, but I'm just gonna... I'll get a bit flustered up here. Yeah, I've applied for a kennel licence and an additional dwelling on my property at eighty-one Jermaine Court, Sanford. The only thing... there has been one objection, and I believe it's pretty irrelevant to what I'm actually doing. At the moment, I've got six runs with kennels on my property, which I believe is a bit of an eyesore, so personally, I want to tidy it up a bit. I want to build this shed and have runs obviously off it. The shed benefits are that they'll provide a shelter for the greyhounds. The kennels will be removed from the paddocks. Noise management will obviously be lower because there's no fauna or anything running around at night time. And yeah, I probably should have read this. I'm a bit baffled now, but yeah, the objections to the licence and the runs are that they don't want a visual impact, but my belief is that I'm actually benefiting my neighbours and adjoining properties, that, you know, it's an expensive Calabon shed, going to cost a lot of money, and to what's there at the moment, it's been there for the past two years, I believe it's actually an improvement. The other thing is that made me think it may have been a bit irrelevant was, I'm still allowed to have dogs there, I'm still allowed to have runs, I'm still allowed to have kennels in a paddock. The only thing that actually changes is I'm not allowed to have dogs beyond six months old. So I think the Dogs Act two thousand states that I'm allowed to have as many pups on my property, there's not actually a limit, up to six months old. And then from six months old, obviously, I'd have to move them on. So the objection that these guys are actually objecting to the development is pretty irrelevant, because I can still do what I want to do. The only thing that actually changes is the dogs older than six months in the run. So yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Mr. Mayor, is Tom Walter of Lindisfarne, who wishes to address council in relation to development application two oh one eight stroke seven three seven.
Good evening, councillors. Tom Walter, twenty-three Job Court, Lindisfarne. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for your time. I've managed to speak to most of you over the last three, four days, after sending through a letter, to just have a chat, and if you had any questions about the project, answer them. Didn't quite get to everybody, unfortunately. I'd ran out of time today, so... But basically, what we're looking to build is a conjoined duplex building, two new units to complement the existing house on a nine hundred and ninety square metre block. The dwellings are designed to be low maintenance. We're incorporating lifts into those dwellings to cater basically for the high elderly population in the area, but they're also going to be suitable for anyone who might want to live in them. We are going to rent them for at least five years, so we're going to add to the already tight rental market and try and ease some of the congestion there. Now, upon lodging the application, we noted that there was lacking private open space in the acceptable solutions, so we proposed that, as part of the design, we incorporated two decks off the north-facing side of the building, basically to complement the existing downstairs private open space, which does meet almost all of the acceptable solutions, sorry. The only thing is, we can't fit a six-by-four rectangle into the downstairs areas, so as an alternate to that, we have added the decks, which I believe fit all the performance criteria. I have had independent planning advice on this, and they have indicated that it would succeed most planning tests, and would also stand up an appeal if it came to that. Now, there's nothing in the planning scheme that I can find, or that anyone that I know can find, that states that private open space can't be a deck. And I believe that with a dwelling where the majority of the living space is on the upstairs, that a deck is actually a better solution to private open space, as opposed to having it all on the ground floor. Now, having said that, with all the private open space being... well, sorry, with all the living areas being on the top story, I personally would much rather go and relax out on the deck or dine on the deck. It's north-facing, it's accessible from the living area. The only thing is, it doesn't quite have the square metres required. So yeah, I feel that the decks meet all the performance criteria. They'll have a solid base, so it won't be timber slap type deck, like a tree to pine type deck. It'll be a solid, either a suspended concrete slab or an outdoor tile, so it won't be... you know, things won't fall through it. It'll have a fully BCA compliant railing, so it'll be perfectly safe for children to play on. Now, I have also added in my submission that I could make the deck slightly larger. That will come with one problem, is that we have to reduce the living area slightly, and also push the front of the building out a little bit, which will make vehicle turning a little bit more difficult. So personally, I think the design...
About thirty seconds.
I feel the design we put together basically is the best fit for everything. I'm not a big fan of just trying to tick all the boxes and sacrifice some other parts of the design. Another option is we could put the private open space at the front of the existing building, which would completely distract from the streetscape and to the heritage of the area, so we've definitely tried to balance it out there. Thank you.
Next speaker, Mr. Mayor, is Kerry Whelan of Cremona, who wishes to address council in relation to notice of motion in relation to seventeen A Frederick Henry Parade.
Thank you. My name's Kerry Whelan. I have property in Cremona, and I reside in Belgrade Marina at the moment. I thank you for the opportunity to speak. First up, I'd like to paint a picture of the neighbourhood. There are a number of residences at the end of Frederick Henry Parade, which have a very steep frontage onto the parade, and are only accessible on foot up steep paths. An access known as Lot seventeen A Frederick Henry Parade provides vehicle access to properties at the rear. On Friday, I emailed all the Aldermen a very short video of the conditions of this access in September last year. I hope you've all had a chance to have a look at it. I think that's quite critical, because I'm making an assumption that the Aldermen would agree that these conditions are very unreasonable. Historically, the council has agreed to maintain the access sufficient to allow emergency and essential vehicles, or essential services. The access is not, however, being maintained to this level. Emergency vehicles are pretty obvious, fire, police, ambulance, SES. But what's an essential vehicle? The list is huge. It's a residence car, it's the cars of family and friends, it's water delivery, septic pumps, tradespeople, Australia posts, wood deliveries, online shopping, RACT, internet providers, et cetera, et cetera. The list goes on. And as we age, and the advantages of staying at home are well documented, this list grows to include in-home care, community nurses, housekeeping, meals on wheels, you get the picture. Most of the services cannot be provided on foot, up steep walking path. A vehicle access is essential. The number of vehicles using the access is numerous, and some of them are heavy, so the access becomes deeply potholed and rutted and fills up with water in the wetter months, making it extremely challenging driving, as I think the video pointed out. Now, the risks of not maintaining the access sufficiently are that, first of all, essential vehicles can't get up there, that residents become socially isolated, and there are incidences of this, that there's increased stress and anxiety at driving, the conditions, and the wear and tear on their valuable assets, the car, and residents feeling compelled to do the maintenance themselves. This has in fact happened. It happened last year. A rhetorical question, is the maintenance appropriate? Are the materials appropriate? Are they hazardous? Is there a risk to personal safety? What do residents want? They like the current character of the access and would like that maintained, but they would like that council maintenance be undertaken by council to ensure that properties are accessible in standard vehicle, a two-wheel drive vehicle. Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Ian Kirk of Artes Architects. I'm not sure if he's in the gallery. I say that in the sense that it relates to development application on tonight's agenda for the waterfront hotel, and the applicant has requested that that matter be... I'm coming to that one. ...be withdrawn on the basis that they wish to revisit the design and change the design. Now, given that it's on the council agenda, you can deal with it, but he's not here to speak, so I'll move on to the next speaker, which is Chris Lawler of Belgrade, who wishes to address council in relation to Belgrade Bluff foreshore master plan.
Good evening, everyone. Chris Lawler's my name. I live in Abbott Street in Belgrade, and I've come to speak to you tonight about a motion before you relating to the Belgrade Bluff foreshore master plan. Forgive me for reading off my phone, I've just got some notes on there. As you're probably aware, the existing master plan was signed off in two thousand and thirteen. Since that time, the local land care group have done some amazing work toward completion of the plan, in working on the parts of the plan that they are... they take responsibility for. Council has also conducted some works towards completing the plan, which, to be very fair to council, have been consistent with the plan, but unfortunately, they're not delivering the greatest of results. And I refer specifically to car park works, where there's problems with water runoff. The plan makes reference to informal edging in many instances, which unfortunately is just translating to untidy. The motion tonight proposes a temporary cessation of works planned and proposed for next financial year, which I'd submit to you is the ideal thing to do in all the circumstances. I never thought I would stand before you asking for you to not do works on the Belgrade Bluff foreshore, but it's what I'm doing tonight, because I think if works go ahead as proposed and planned for next year, it will delay a proper result, it will delay the area being shown the absolute respect that it deserves for up to fifteen years, by the time roads... road resealing wears out and requires renewal, and an edging requires renewal. The proposal won't address the issues with the car park edging and the water runoff in the edging as well. The motion tonight, I think, also provides... sorry, the rethink on the master plan provides an opportunity for a broader rethink on the area. And the area I'm talking about is Kangaroo Bay, the Belgrade Key, the Boardwalk, the Bluff Foreshore and Belgrade Beach, and perhaps an opportunity to provide some consistency in approach as to what we want that entire area to look like into the future. I understand there's some timelines put around the motion tonight for a review of the master plan to take place, which I thoroughly support. Like I said, the last thing I ever thought I would be doing would be asking you to hold off on doing some works around there, but I think to do the works that are proposed would be a grave mistake. It's worthy of note that the motion before you is supported by the... sorry, is not opposed by the land care group, and I think they are key stakeholders around here, and they deserve every say in what occurs. They've done an incredible job for the last twenty years, and I understand and I share their frustration at delays. But I think a short delay is proposed tonight with a view to revisiting the plan makes a lot of sense. We can have a bit of a rethink on it, have a look at how we want it to look more broadly into the future, and reassess and look for planning... sorry, funding solutions perhaps next year to move forward with an improved result. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, there are no further individual speakers, but we do have a deputation that was agreed to by itself in relation to a number of speakers from South Arm in relation to the South Arm Skate Park, or proposed South Arm Skate Park. And there are three speakers, and Mr. Mayor, under the terms of the deputation, up to fifteen minutes is being granted for the deputation. The first speaker is Mr. Sam Barwick. I want to give a couple of words to this.
Oh, I think the three will come together altogether, and...
And then there are other speakers, being Matt Clump and Karen Day. If they can come forward and turn for us. Thank you.
I think there's an intention that the other two would join them but not speak as well.
No, it's these two gentlemen, I think, that are joining and not speaking, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I'll give them that. You have a couple of them, or? I'll give Matt one. You give them there, and I'll give Matt one.
When you're ready. Thanks very much.
Thank you. So I'm Webowick, and I'm lucky enough to live at twenty-two Cowerton Place. I'm here tonight with my brother Sam, which I have a son who's on, and Liam Ma, our mate. And as a team with massive community support behind us for the South Arm Skate Park proposal that we've been working on for the past five years, we've been trying since January to get the chance to stand up and thank council in person, to share with you all the absolute excitement in community since November, when we all got the letter telling us that the skate park was going to go ahead. When we started this campaign five years ago, we were just young boys who were pretty much stuck in South Arm because of the lack of transport and just because of our age. So... sorry, I've lost it. We started the campaign five years ago, and since then, we had nothing much to do around the town, except in summer, we could swim at the beach and play on the raft, or basically sit inside on our phones. We did venture outside. We were always being told off for being on the roads, and told how dangerous it was to be skateboarding alone on the streets, but there was really nowhere else for us to go. And sadly, nothing at all has changed for the kids in South Arm within the last five years, except knowing that soon they'll have a place to play that's safe for them. Nowadays, when we look down the street in the afternoon, we can see up to a dozen little kids riding the bikes and skaters up and down the street, and jumping homemade ramps on the rough gravel, just as we have done growing up as kids. But our motivation is to get these kids off the street and onto the park where riding can be done at any time of day, without the danger of cars screaming up and down the street. It excites us to say that these kids, along with everyone else in the community, will have that place soon enough. Their parents are also so appreciative and excited about the skate park happening, because it means that their kids can play together with others in the community. They'll be making new friends at this central hub for people of all ages. Us boys still skate, and skating doesn't have an age limit, it's just something everyone does. There's retirees out there still skating, so don't think you're too old to get around it, it's for everyone who enjoys it. So also, we really look forward to heading out for surf and coming back, grabbing a shop feed, and popping over to the skate park for a roll around the park with everyone else. Now, Sam came home on the bus from work one day, and he told us a story about his trip home. He was approached by a lovely lady who sat in front of him with her grandson. She turned around and started talking to him about the skate park, and told her grandson that Sam was one of the boys that got the skate park approved. His eyes lit up, and he talked to Sam the whole trip home about how excited him and his mates were to have such a fun place to skate that was so close to home. This is just one of the many stories that we've come across from people that we don't even know. It's made us feel so proud that we've continued to strive for achieving this skate park, no matter how much it pushed us away. We found ourselves and our journey on the highlight of last year's Crime Stoppers promotion for safer communities, telling the story of our determination, care for our community, and that South Arm would now have a safe place for its youth to play and get together. Crime Stoppers have also supported us by providing research to show the benefits and positive outcomes of skate parks all around Australia. We know that growing up in South Arm, there's a lot of respect from the locals. For example, we never see any graffiti on any of the buildings around town, and the community love is just great. And our community works together with things like building the community centre all those years ago, this skate park now, the new raft we have at the beach, and all the new stuff going on at the community centre at the moment. We know that this skate park is going to be the next part of South Arm's history. The kids of South Arm will own their skate park and take care of it as their own. We believe it will be a place that will bring all the locals and visitors to South Arm together to enjoy the community even more. We can't wait to show everyone how much this area within South Arm would be respected, loved, and maintained by all the people who use it. As you can see tonight, we've got a few people who've come along in the stands with us to show their thanks to council. There's a lot of little ones who are really excited as well, but they're unfortunately tucked in bed at home, so a big thanks from them as well. And we really want to thank again all the people who have helped and supported us along the way, from designing the skate park, multiple... from designing the skate park multiple times over, all the way down to people just offering to help in any way they can. And trust me, it really, it means a lot. And most importantly, coming along tonight and to all the previous meetings that we have been to, to show that this really is, and I can't stress this enough, exactly what we need. We've wanted a skate park since we were little kids, but it's not really until we needed it that we got more and more closer to putting the concrete in the ground. Thanks for your time.
Next speaker, Mr. Mayor, is Matt Clump. If you could come forward for us.
Good evening. My name's Matt Clump. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I currently live at, on Calverton Place with my wife and my two young sons. We bought our family, we bought our property three years ago, and we built a beautiful family home. One of the draw cards for us was the development of a recreational skate park area walking distance from our home. We were excited and still are excited that our children will have a safe place to play so close to home. Our family, along with every other family we speak with, are a hundred percent in support of the development and will never change our minds. Currently, my oldest son, Ollie, who's two and a half, and believe it or not, is an avid skateboarder, scooter, and BMXer, begs me daily to take him to the skate park. Unfortunately, this means a forty-kilometer round trip to Lauderdale, which we make regularly, thus removing us from the community we choose to live in and also want to play in. Every time we're at the Lauderdale Skate Park, we bump into other families from South Arm, and we always have the same conversation about how great it will be when the South Arm Skate Park is completed. My wife, who is currently at home with our sons, often feels isolated as South Arm doesn't have a dedicated recreational area to take the kids and connect with other South Arm families. She has to travel to Clifton Beach, Crumorne, or further. You have no idea how important this recreational area is to us all. One of the main things South Arm is missing is a focal point where the community can come together, get to know each other, let the kids play, the parents can talk, and the community can grow stronger. And what better time to do that than right now? Because our children are being bombarded with screens, phones, tablets, computers, video games. Luckily for me, I grew up in the eighties. Where playing outside was the best choice. I hope, I hope, sorry. I hope it will also be the best choice for all the South Arm kids to play outside when this project is completed. Also, think of the potential economic benefits this skate park will have on South Arm. Families traveling from Crumorne, Sanford, Clifton Beach to utilize this skate park may stop at our local cafe for a coffee, stop at the shop, fill up with some fuel, grab some fish and chips, or go to the pharmacy. Unfortunately, it's difficult at this time of night for a lot of the families who would show up here and support this. So I'm speaking here tonight on behalf of all the families that couldn't make it, including my own, and really, really, really want to thank you all for this very exciting time and this new, new development. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, Mr. Mayor, is Karen Dargy. If she can come forward for us.
Hi, I'm, I wanted to thank the children for coming tonight because quite a few of them, as Matt mentioned, have gone to bed already. But these guys have made it through to come and see this, this wonderful night. From the last census in two thousand and sixteen, we know that there were eight hundred and eighty people living in South Arm. Sixteen point two percent of the total population were children aged between zero and fourteen years, and five point four percent were between fifteen and nineteen years. Assuming that not much has changed in the demographics of our community, this means that approximately one-fifth of our population are too young to vote, and one-fifth haven't yet had the opportunity to tell you how excited they are about the long-promised skate park. I'm here to share with you their eager anticipation, their gratitude, and their love for South Arm. Over the last few months, we've taken the opportunity to record the responses of local children and their family to three simple questions. Many, as I said, would have loved to have been here this evening, but it's a school night and bedtime takes priority. Why are you looking forward to the skate park? And I'm going to summarize their actual age. It'll be a lot of fun. Grade six student, South Arm Primary. Kids can go to the skate park and play there, grade six students. It will be a safe and fun environment to skate, grade five. A new and exciting place for youth to congregate, Lily, seventeen, South Arm. A place to have fun with mates and improve your fitness, George, fifteen. A safe place for the community to get together, Josiah, thirty-eight. I look forward to hanging out with my friends, Ella, ten. Why is the skate park important to you? A lot of people like to skate, grade six student. Skate parks are fun, grade four student. I like skating and it's fun, grade six student. It'll be a good place to catch up with friends and skate. It's close to me, grade five student. I feel this skate park will ensure another physical outlet and a place to safely hang out for our children and teenagers. Sienna, thirty-five, South Arm. In an era dominated by social media and gaming addictions, I think it's critical to have other avenues of activities to engage the community, Lily, seventeen, South Arm. I'm eleven years old and I love to skate. If you build the skate park here in South Arm, it would help mum from driving every time to Rosney and every other skate park. Thank you, Oscar, eleven, South Arm. I'm learning to skate, Ella, ten. What do you like living, what do you like about living in South Arm? It's a relaxing community, grade six. You have room and you can hang out with your friend, grade six. The community and the freedom, grade five. It's quiet down here, grade five. It's the best place in the world, grade five. I love this friendly, safe, and relaxed community. We have so many friends within this South Arm area, Sienna, thirty-five. It's close to all my favourite beaches. I love my school, Shay, six, South Arm. I've also got a copy of a letter from Jo Maddock, mother of three, scout leader from Sanford, and registered nurse from the Royal Hobart Hospital's theatre recovery unit. She, I don't know how you submit it, but I'll pop it over here. This is copies for those interested. She talks a lot about how we are in a bit of a crisis where obesity, twenty-five percent of children between five and seventeen years old are obese or overweight. She goes on to talk about the societal cost of childhood obesity. It's massive and long-term, and it needs real consideration in this process. I was alarmed to see recently, or not so recently, but I did, a piece of, a document came across my desk, the Tasmanian Population Survey, which shows that critical health indicators within Tasmania for, for Clarence, for many of the diseases are higher than in Tasmania's general population. So I think the addition of, I've lost my last page, sorry. All of these diseases can be minimized by increased physical activity. We owe it to the future generations to provide opportunities to improve their health outcomes and better equip them through both education and by providing relevant infrastructure that engages their interests and encourages increased physical activity. Skate or die may once have been a video game and a popular catchphrase to donate that you may as well be dead if you're not skating. But now it's actually called to stay healthy and more relevant than ever. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item nine is motions on notice, nine point one, Alderman Von Berta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I should move the motion that's in the agenda.
Do we have a second, please? Thank you, Alderman Newington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I think that my motion is quite self-explanatory. In fact, there's almost three pages of explanatory notes. And along with Kerry Whelan's deputation, I think that the time is right for council to reconsider the vehicular access at seventeen A Frederick Henry Parade. And therefore, I believe that we need a report from the general manager and that we can workshop some of the solutions that would actually come from that report. And we need to look at basically whether the level of service is still appropriate, and if not, how does it need to be changed.
Alderman Newington.
I think my colleague over the years has figured out saying, it's gone over the years with this issue, and I think it makes sense to actually have a good look at it and work out what exactly can and can't be done. You know, the last time it was really looked at, there's been some changes in expectations of the community in the area, I expect, and also some changes in the people living in those houses. And we might come back with a different result than what we had in the past. So I certainly think it's worth looking at and bringing it up to a certain standard, which it seems like it's certainly not in the name.
Other speakers. Alderman James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The question of the, the general manager preparing a report and also it being considered a workshop is, in fact, possibly the best way to go in relation to this. The question in relation to what the residents may want in the way of access to those properties at the rear of Frederick Henry Parade is another matter because of the nature, and it's my understanding, that this is an unclassified road. And by that, the nature or the definition of an unclassified road, it means that it's not, in, in the strictest terms, the responsibility of the local planning authority or council to maintain or keep that in a state of repair because it's for the very nature of being an unclassified road means just that. There are a number of other unclassified roads within the city, and a number of us have received information in relation to that from residents concerned about a section of road in front of their place, Lessington Street, for example, where the council has written to those residents and said that it is an unclassified road and it's, it's not listed as part and parcel of the council's responsibility to undertake that. So having said that, this, this matter has been going on for at least ten, and a number of aldermen in this place here have been part and parcel of meetings with Frank and Mavis Doran, for example, and other residents. And there has been some consideration that they're, from a number of residents back then, that they really wanted the status quo to be as is, and that is, that they didn't want to have this road developed to the extent to which it would provide, the council would provide the access, and therefore, it's what the residents want. Now, that's back in that time, and there may be changes since then. So look, in a nutshell, notwithstanding that this is an unclassified road and, and council has some concerns about taking on or maintaining and repairing what we call unclassified roads, let's take it back to the workshop, let's see what can come out of it. And at the end of the day, if, if council decides to take on this particular road and decide to maintain it and to unclassify the road, then I think there will be other opportunities for other people within the city of Clarence to seek council's support to unclassify their particular section of road and have it maintained and basically kept up to speed with the local maintenance and so on as required. I will support this because I think for the new councillors in this place, aldermen slash councillors in this place, that we need to be able to have full bottle on this, Mr. Mayor, and I think at least a consideration of that ought to be undertaken to a workshop. I support the motion.
Other speakers. Alderman Pearce.
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman James is quite right because I don't know how many meetings we had down there, Alderman James, and discussed this, yes. It's an unclassified road, and that's why council hasn't done a lot to it. But look, I'm quite happy with the, the motion here, and I'm going to support it like Alderman James did because we can have another look at it, that's for sure. But I can assure all the aldermen in this room, oh, I don't know how many years ago now, but it's been some time ago, there were many, many meetings about this road. But of course, as Alderman James said, it was an unclassified road, so it wasn't council's obligation to, to do anything with it. But, you know, I'm quite happy if we go to a workshop and discuss it further.
Thank you. Other speakers. Friday, Friday, Alderman Von Berta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I thank Alderman James and Alderman Pearce for their contributions. And the aspect of unclassified roads, I feel that the general manager's report to us will actually cover the situation in a holistic manner. So looking at the situation in relation to Crumorne as compared to other situations across the city. And also, I believe that consultation will be inherent in any suggested solutions that come to mind. Thank you.
Thank you. So the motion is as depicted on the screen. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. Against? Motion is carried. Nine point two, Alderman Edmonds. Do we have a second, please? Thank you, Alderman Kendy. Would you like to speak to the motion?
I was getting a little bit nervous with the full gallery, but I thank Alderman James for clearing the mount for me. I'll keep my comments really brief.
Order, please.
I'd, I'd like to thank Kevin, Claire, Simon, in particular, from the Lord of the primary school association and school community for working so constructively in both raising this issue and proposing solutions. I think most of us have visited or spoken with the school community since that happened. In the spirit of working constructively, I'll put this motion forward so the council can urgently explore our options and bring in the Department of Education, state growth, et cetera, to figure out a solution. The area isn't safe and traffic is a bit of a mess. So I think we need to do our part for the problems that occur both before and after school. As alderman, we may not have all the answers at once, but we can take responsibility for solving problems like this one. We should note the positive signs from the minister for both education and infrastructure rock lift so far. And I think while this issue is front of mind, it should be when we're acting. Let's work together, stop the buck passing, it drives everyone nuts, and sort this out together. I think we owe it to the families who attend Lord of the primary school, and I commend the motion.
Thank you. Alderman Kendy, would you like to speak to it?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Alderman Edmonds has covered that very succinctly. Thank you.
Thank you. Other speakers. Alderman James.
Yes, look, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that where Alderman Edmonds is, is heading is okay, but he, he tends to miss some of the key points in relation to this. And, and by having a briefing prior to the workshop from the chair of the Lord of the School Association is okay, or an appropriate representative of the school, you know, you're basically leaving out some of the other important stakeholders. And I hate using that word stakeholders, Mr. Mayor, because it tends to mean that we're in a sort of a, a close sort of circuit operation. But nevertheless, look, it, it, it doesn't give the, the, the full picture in relation to this matter. And I, I attended the meeting at, in the forecourt of the, of the Fourshore Tavern car park last week. And there were a number of representation, a number of representatives from other groups that, and there was even a suggestion from Lord of the Advance Alliance or whatever, whatever it's called, that they had interest from a number of parties other than the school association that wanted to be involved in this and also have some input in relation to it. So look, okay, it's great to have the school association, Alderman Edmonds. So, look, okay, it's great to have the school association, Alderman Edmonds, but, look, let's look at the bigger picture. And why not have other representatives involved in this? Because we know that Lord of Dale School Association and the parents and students that that organisation represents, but there are other people too that have lived in Lord of Dale for many years and they have sort of been left out of this particular debate, it would seem, on the basis that it's more of a school association or school parents, et cetera, that are getting involved in this. If Alderman Edmonds had, in fact, made it, you know, sort of a broader picture situation, then, look, I would support that, but by just getting one side of the story from the association and not to the extent of hearing other comments, and for crikey's, we're in a democracy here, aren't we? There's always two or three sides to the argument. So, look, even though I think it's great, I would have liked this motion to be sort of the netcast further afield. And reluctantly, I feel that we haven't got the full bottle on this and therefore I cannot support the motion.
Other speaker. Alderman Mulder?
I share some of Alderman James's concerns, but I'm not too sure that the wording necessarily precludes other people going. And I'd probably like some comfort to knowing because, yes, in addition to the Lord of Dale Advance Group with their proposal, I also think that there are other issues that are there. One of them was at the time of the Walker Corporation development, it was a condition of state roads, for example, that the road be elevated in relation to potential sea level rise, sea inundation, and also as a means of creating a techno-solution to the water inundation during heavy floods and things. So there are those sorts of issues which need to be brought in to a discussion like this. There's also, it's one thing to get a principal of a school to brief you on road safety issues. One might like to think we would have the Department of State Growth, for example, be invited to come along and explain to us their engineering solutions. And we also have a petition table tonight. Fifteen hundred people who want us to do something about the junction between Lord of Dale and Acton Road. And then there's the long-term program to actually upgrade the whole road from Rogueby through to Sanford up to a stand which will suit the current traffic, let alone the future traffic thing. So I do agree and I don't think there's anything to stop us from actually broadening our thoughts about this so that if we do come down to it, at least we've captured some of the other issues that exist in that area. So I'll be supporting the motion because I don't think it necessarily means that we can't hear from these other people.
Mulder, I think Alderman Walker?
That's correct. And just one quick point. In sympathy with our colleagues in the Melbourne City Council that had their city shut down today by vegan protesters, we should be using the words stakeholders at every opportunity tonight. I would like to say that with this motion here, this motion is trying to help an issue. Now, you may be trying to throw some, you know, mud around it to say that other groups might not have been included. This isn't excluding anybody. This is just to say, here's a key stakeholder and we should engage with them. And, yes, that can include Advance, Lord of Dale Association, and other groups in the area. Now, you're not going to get away with that tripe anecdote. I'm a big fan of the Free Range Kids Movement and Leonor Skanasi and all the work she's done there. And my first walk by myself as a sub-ten-year-old was from the top of Threadvau Drive down to the shops in Lord of Dale. It took me well over forty-five minutes. And even the most bohemian of parents now wouldn't let their kids do that walk, given the level of traffic and the intensity of traffic around this area. So, talk about activity, well, you know, safe access to let kids walk to and from school either with you or by themselves is something we should be striving to and it's something that we're not able to deliver as a wider community. Now, it's not necessarily all our responsibility, but this is basically just calling to, for us to, you know, redouble our efforts in collaboration with stakeholders, including the local community and including other levels of government. Let's just get on with it and support the motion.
Here are the speakers. Alderman Blommet?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. And, Mr. Mayor, I like yourself, Alderman Edwards, Alderman Von Berto, Alderman Kennedy, and Alderman James. I too was there, meeting with representatives of the Lord of Dale Parents and Students Association on the twenty-eighth of March. And at that meeting, as the move of this motion mentioned, the Minister for Infrastructure and Education, the Honourable Jeremy Rockliff, who wasn't able to attend in person, sent a letter along with one of his colleagues to read. And in that letter, of course, acknowledges that there was also a representative from the Department of State Growth in attendance. But this really has been a tripartite or tripartisan approach. The minister, in his correspondence, acknowledged the representations he had received from Dr. Woodruff of the Greens, also from the federal member for Franklin, the Honourable Julie Collins, as well as other parliamentary colleagues. This is more than the full bottle, this motion. This motion, Mr. Mayor, deals very succinctly and very appropriately with where we're currently at. And that is that we have a minister in a government who has listened to the concerns of parliamentary colleagues across the chamber and recognising there is an issue. I mean, Lord of Dale Primary, I think from memory, has seven hundred and sixty-one students. It is the largest public primary school in this state. Enormous growth. And we'll deal with other issues later tonight regarding, as we had earlier, with their representations regarding skate park in South, in that neck of the woods. So what the minister did say, and this is important, I think, and that is that he is absolutely aware of the fact that those of us that attended and those of us who wanted to attend and weren't able to attend for other commitments, I know Alderman Pearce, Alderman Newington in particular, mentioned to me that they were very disappointed they weren't able to attend in person, but it is a result of the genuine and heartfelt concern for the safety of our children and doing whatever we can to reduce risk to them. The minister shares a genuine concern as a father and as a responsible minister of both infrastructure and education, and that's why he's taken the very decisive and appropriate action to engage with the Transport Commissioner, who has the secretary function of setting the speed limits, and also to work with other officers to ensure that the appropriate safety measures are put in place. I personally received assurances from the Minister's senior adviser that this will happen as a priority. We were there last Friday and a lot of interest from the local media as well. And those who were lucky enough, fortunate to watch Win TV, one of the top news bulletins was about the community getting the result for the Lord of Dale, primarily the primary school kids, a community that's working, a government that consults, and action, appropriate actions taken. So this motion is more than the full bottle. This is the sort of stuff that we're here for. This is the sort of stuff protecting our kids. This is what it's all about. So I commend the move of this motion. Very happy to support it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Other speakers. Von Berto?
Mr. Mayor, I support the motion also. I thought it was very interesting to actually stand in the area at the time when the children and their parents were going to school. I live in that area and I don't actually frequent the school at that time because my children are a little bit older than that age. So it was very enlightening to be on the corner of South Arm Highway and Ringwood Road and to see the practices that actually occurred. We are looking at some projects on Ringwood Road, or one project on Ringwood Road for this coming budget year. I actually believe that we may be able to do more in this coming budget year, but that obviously is a decision for all of the councillors. There are some short-term wins that I think we can have and there are some longer-term issues, as Alderman Mulder has actually suggested, which will actually entail significant funds from the state government. So I think there is a range of things that we can do. I think also we need to look at the solution that Advance Lord of Dale has put forward. That is one solution. I think there needs to be more than one solution. We've also had tonight the petition and we have learnt about it during the day by being emailed in relation to the petition in as far as the intersection of South Arm Road and Acton Road. That has been an ongoing issue for a very long time, certainly all the time that I've been on council. We also have the footpath, a gravel path, that the community or a lot of the community would actually like to see going from a Targo, not a Targo.
Or South Arm?
I've just had a mental blank. From Oat Towns. I'm saying Targo, it's a long path. From Oat Towns to Lord of Dale. So these are all aspects of the same issue that we need to consider. And as I say, we need to look short-term and long-term. So I commend Alderman Edmonds' motion. Thank you.
Robert Foy, Alderman Edmonds?
Yep. I'll keep my comments very brief. Thank you for the comments from colleagues. The school association is on here because they're the people who brought this to everyone's attention and did precisely all the hard yards about these kids' safety. I would definitely, I think as Alderman Von Berto touched on, Advance Lord of Dale, and in fact, anyone else who had options and opinions, because I think it's pretty clear a lot of people do, should be able to bring them to the table. However, when we get to the pointy end, I think we can't be shoveling everything onto quite a succinct sort of scope, just weighing it down. I think that also, I've made similar comments in terms of the history. I think the comment from Kevin in particular was that he wanted to move forward rather than look back too much and I agree with that. Obviously, there's plenty of reasons to say no and this happens with a lot of issues, but I think we just need to move on and this is about being practical, working with the state government that has said they want to tackle the issue. So let's strike while the iron's hot, get all the options in front of us and figure out a way for the kids who go to the school.
Thank you. So the motion is as presented by Alderman Edmonds. All those in favour? Against? Carried. Item nine point three is an open motion, Alderman Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motion as reads is that council, the amended motion rather, as circulated, is that council undertakes a review of the 2013 Belrie Bluff Fourshore Master Plan and a suspension of associated scheduled works is put in place until completion of the review. The review is to be concluded prior to the end of the 2019 calendar year.
Do we have a second, please? Thank you, Alderman James.
Look, most of the major disappointments with council decisions since becoming an alderman in 2012 occurred in the first year. The Belrie Bluff Fourshore Master Plan came before council in 2013 and that was also something that I wasn't particularly happy with and indeed voted against. This master plan is now out of date and well and truly out of step with community expectations as well as regional needs. All streets matter, but this Esplanade and Fourshore corridor is so much more than a local thoroughfare. It's shared and enjoyed by many who don't reside anywhere near the area. Just to recap, since 2013, the Belrie Beach All Abilities Playground has been, come into place, a substantial upgrade on the Moorabund playground that used to be there. A hotel development has been approved in Kangaroo Bay and detailed studies have commenced into ferry services, all of which will lead to increased utilisation of the Fourshore area. Blunston Arena hosts a range of events that attract thousands of patrons and ferries will bring patrons to the Kangaroo Bay area with the Fourshore potentially providing a scenic stroll facility. The section from Kangaroo Bay to Belrie Beach is becoming increasingly popular given its ambience and panoramic vistas. However, the informal edge of Victoria Esplanade creates poor delineation with the Fourshore and council needs to determine what level of curbing and quality of reseal is appropriate. Put simply, given the importance of this area, council must now work with local stakeholders to get it right. Poor choices in road seals or other infrastructure will be in place for probably decades if we put it down now. Now, I'm a proudly paid-up member of the Long Kiln Point Land Care Group and I sadly don't get there every month for the clean-ups, but I can say this group has made the area from Camilla Bay through to, basically, nearly the south end of Gilston Bay, you know, much improved for the wider community. And the Belrie Bluff Land Care and Coast Care Group have been around for longer and their passion and commitment has just been exceptional. And I want to put on record my deep gratitude for all their work over the years. They have provided a wider community benefit and I'd shudder to think how much money they've saved council in doing the work that they've undertaken. And I can understand, given the state of the Esplanade and the parking arrangements in general, if you like, the shortcomings of the 2013 master plan for the area that we're working through, that they may feel to a degree taken for granted and I think that should be a matter of considerable regret to council. I do appreciate the letter which I've circulated from Graham Rainbow of the Belrie Bluff Land Care Group, I think Coast Group, I should say, and it is providing support, albeit heavily qualified and qualified for understandable readers. The Coal River Valley is reaping the rewards of the high-value tourism and it's inevitable with the hotel infrastructure slated for Kangaroo Bay and the serious financial commitment by the state government to looking into integrated ferry transport that more visitors from local interstate and international destinations are likely to be coming over. And I'm going to just say that in relation to this area, apologies for some of the longer-term alderman colleagues because I've certainly brought others to tears on this in the past. But, you know, and that is sort of spruiking a future for the area that's similar to Devonport. And that, of course, is the Devonport that was formerly part of the wonderful Northshore Council of Auckland and then became subsumed into the wider Auckland Council. Now, ferries start there at the beginning of the day, getting commuters into the CBD and then as the day goes on, you find tourists coming from the other side, tending to do half-day trips. It's almost like that half-day is a must-day of their time over there. The terminal there, I can assure you, has an abundance of secure bike infrastructure. Once you get out of it, you won't find a lot of trinket shops, but you will find some lovely cafes, bookshops, and the like. There are some wonderful green spaces to stroll through nearby.
Both in policy and geography.
I hope you can actually bring us back on the topic here.
I'm putting out a vision that we should be having for our local area, which is aspiring for the top and, you know, if we're getting into topics of toilet blocks, the best one you'll come across is in that area, which is built into the ground and the roof is a viewing platform. But...
I did say it is aspirational.
Belrie Bluff deserves a quality and strategic approach by council. Naturally, the residents will take a keen interest and care about the future of this area and groups such as the local land care group provide a wonderful resource of knowledge for council as well as the labour they're providing making the area wonderful. So I seek council's support to ensure that we can review what's in place and make sure we get it right. It is a delay, but a delay is better than a debacle.
Thank you. Alderman James?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I am glad and satisfied that Alderman Walker took, I think, my advice on Friday and made some cosmetic changes to the, yeah, well, well, let's just, let me have my say, okay? The point about this motion is, and I support it, Mr. Mayor, as I said with the motion, is that the word cessation has been removed, has been removed, Alderman Walker.
Look, Alderman James, please address your comments to the Chair.
Okay, well, I am. I am speaking through you in relation to the matter that Alderman Walker has raised.
All right. I just want to make sure the friction doesn't generate.
Okay, that's for sure. No problems.
Thank you.
So the word cessation has been removed and the word suspension has been put in lieu of. And also to the motion that's before the Chair is that the review is to be concluded prior to the end of the 2019 calendar year. Now, that makes a huge difference in relation to what was circulated and what Mr. Rainbow has actually supported, which I find a little bit unusual, given that there is that cessation in place and also to the, it's subject to whenever the review is completed. Having said that, this motion does give some credibility in relation to when works will start on the actual Victoria Esplanade. And in support of the actual Belrie Bluff Fourshore Master Plan, and I was in this place at that time and supported wholeheartedly because it was a hell of an improvement, as you'd be aware, Mr. Mayor, and I think you were residing in that area at the time, was the fact that there was that degree of interest from the community and also to, there was a plan to go forward from 2013. Having said that, any plan, for that matter, may lead review and in this particular case, not only has it, work's been suspended for... And in this particular case, not only has it, uh, works been suspended, uh, for the completion of the review, but at the same time, uh, the review is to be completed by the end of 2019. I support the motion before the chair.
Other speakers?
Uh. Mr Mayor, it's really good that Alderman Walker has been able to provide us with a response from, uh, Mr Rainbow. I actually gave Mr Rainbow a call today because Mr Rainbow and I have worked on things together over the years, and I really value his opinion, uh, as do I value the opinion of Mr Lawler. And so, I'm really pleased to see that there is support from the community who work very hard in that area, um, for Alderman Walker's motion. So, I support the motion.
Thank you. Other speakers? Write a reply on the part? See council's support? Thank you. So, the motion is presented on the screen by Alderman Walker. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item ten, reports from outside bodies. Um, the first is the Southern Tasmanian Council's authority December quarterly report. Could I have a motion that it be received, please? Thank you, Alderman Pierce, second to Alderman Newington. Any discussion on that report? In that case, I'll put the motion that we receive it. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. I apologize, I overlooked that. Uh, all those in favour? Against? Carried. The Copping Refuge Disposal Site, joint authority, Alderman Walker. There's no report in the agenda papers, Alderman Walker. Uh, it's just if you've got any oral report to make? Thank you. Um, Tasmanian Water Corporation, there's nothing to report there. Moving on to ten point two, reports from council.
Call the reports, is that for the Copping Refuge Disposal, joint authority?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Um, moving on to ten point two, reports from council and special committees and other representative bodies. Are there any reports? Alderman Tom?
Thank you, Miss Smith. Um, I tabled the minutes of the advisory committee and the health and wellbeing committee. Um, and just give a very quick verbal report on the success of the Connectus brochure. Yes, that, um, is great and we see why it's a body and thank you in particular to those community members, one of whom is in the gallery, who have put a lot of work into it, making it the success it was.
Thank you. Any other reports? Thank you. Moving on to item eleven, reports of officers. Um, firstly, eleven point one, that the information in the weekly briefing reports of the eighteenth and twenty-fifth of March and the first of April be noted. If I could have a second, please, for Alderman Edmunds, Alderman Newington. Are there any questions on the weekly briefing reports? Alderman James?
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor. Uh, I refer to the weekly briefing report of the twenty-fifth of March. And the ropey planning scheme amendment. In particular, the, uh, comments that the Minister for Housing, Planning and Human Services made in the attachments. Uh, my question through you to, um, Mr Lovell. Uh, Mr Lovell, on page two of the minister's, um, report to councils, he says, under legislative context, "In addition, comprehensive reviews of all three regional land use strategies will be undertaken following the implementation of the future, uh, future Tasmanian policies." Then, over on page three, it says, and I quote, "Moreover, as the regional land use strategies are a regional plan, it would require the general support from all councils within the region." And then, further, on page five, it says that "It is strongly recommended that written endorsement of the proposed change is sought from all of the planning authorities in the relevant region." And to put it finally into context, the Minister for Planning will also require all planning authorities in the relevant region to agree on the proposed amendments.
Is this actually a question? Is it a dissertation? What, what is this?
Oh, I'm reading it as a long question. Alderman James, could you please briefly?
Thank you. Um, Mr Lovell, is it a requirement then for all planning authorities to, um, agree on any changes that are being played, that have been proposed for any changes to the regional planning authorities? Or is it general support?
Through you, Mr Mayor, um. Need a background first. Until, until this time, there's been no formalized procedure for the minister to assess a proposal which requires an amendment to the regional strategy. Classic example would be a change to the urban growth boundary. Um, in an attempt to, uh, to make a more rational approach to that consideration, the planning policy unit has drawn up for the minister a procedure to go through, um, uh, for the minister to be satisfied before he would approve, um, the amendment. One of those tests would be to, uh, to get the approval of the other councils. Now, how that might, how that might be relevant is if, for example, a council wanted to substantially expand the urban growth boundary, that may have some implications on the demand and supply for residential land within the sub-region. And so, what do the other councils think about that, for example, if that was to affect, um, the, the, the supply of land in, in their council areas? So, I think what the minister's trying to do in this is trying to get the councils to agree on a regional's, a regional approach to planning before he has to make that decision. That's only one of the tests.
I had something, Mr Mayor. I think he's also saying in flagging his letter that he won't really consider a, a, a holistic review of the regional land use strategies until all twelve councils in the south have submitted their LPS schemes. At the moment, I think only two.
All right. Any other questions on the weekly briefing reports? In that case, I'll put the motion that the info in them be noted. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Uh, there's nothing at eleven point two, so I now advise that council intends to sit as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approval Act and move to the planning items. The first of which is eleven point three point one, a development application at nine Coventry Rise Howard for two multiple dwellings. Move to Alderman Newington, second to Alderman Blomley. Would you like to speak to the motion, sir?
Um, yes, Mr Mayor. Uh, look, obviously, you know, by the time those things get to us in the chamber, the, the opponents have gone through a fair few hoops to, to get it to work. And the thing about any form of planning scheme or something, to try to describe everything that can and can't be done in different locations, to try and take in account the shape of the, the land, the shape of the block, the buildings next door, all those sort of things, to try and make it perfect so every single thing can be, um, uh, scenario can be dealt with, um, you know, it's very difficult. And I, and I suppose, you know, looking through, reading through the, the fact that it's been recommended by the, the staff, um, you know, and, and the concerns that have been raised have been, you know, quite clearly dealt with by the staff in terms of the, the effect it has on the other, other buildings, taking advantage of the view. Um, you know, making sure that the house, the, the dwellings are, are able to be marketable and, and sold. And I just think that, um, that, you know, certainly if it's been recommended by the staff, um, a couple of minor things which, um, I certainly don't see as, as reasons to not, to not approve it. And I think, um, you know, having the, uh, the type of, uh, in-vill housing and, and the increased density that we're after in, in the communities, especially those areas that are well sought after, I think this is a great outcome for a, a, a block, um, of this shape and size. And I think it should be something that we should all support. So, I would certainly be recommending approval of this as per the officer's recommendation.
Thank you, Alderman Blomley.
Uh, Mr Mayor, I think Alderman Newington is very eloquent. I don't need to add anything else.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman James?
Yeah, look, uh, thanks, Mr Mayor. Perhaps I could ask a question through you to Mr Lovell. Uh, Mr Lovell, on page thirty-four, it refers to the, uh, Armerigo versus Launceston City Council and the Hone to Architecture and Design. And in that, it refers to the reasonable, reasonablest test to be applied. Am I, is it, is it appropriate for me to sort of, uh, think along the lines that in the Jay Fook's decision, it dealt with a window? And in this particular case, in this particular case, it's dealing with the quality of life as distinct from the number of windows that may be impacted upon. It, could you just clarify that? And also too, in your answer, could you just, um, give a sort of a, a test as to whether or not the Armerigo decision now would take precedence over the Jay Fook's decision, please?
The, uh, both decisions are provided for background information and build to the argument. Uh, the, the Fook's decision was about one window. The Armerigo decision is about where there's multiple windows, as in this case. So, whilst the, whilst the Fook's is relevant in relation to the effect on a window of this, of, of, of the property next door, because there are several windows, the Armerigo decision provides more useful information. So, this is, Armerigo isn't about one window, it's about, as in this case, the, the quantitative effect of having through a number of windows which gives you an excess of the, you know, amount of hours a day.
Just on a supplementary, so if that's the line of thinking, is it appropriate to mention the Jay Fook's decision?
True, Mr Mayor. Um, I'd say, um, we use that by way of building the, uh, building the understanding of, of, of the explanation. Um, what I would say is it is, uh, the most relevant is the Armerigo, but we give both by way of background so that it's clear, um, that there are, there have been decisions about that issue. And, and there's been thoughts for it, yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, Miss Smith, I'd just like to thank Mr Lovell for the answers that he's given. And it's really clear to me now, because I've actually heard those answers here tonight and also at the council meeting briefing on Friday. So, I'm really clear now on the situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Other speakers? Write a reply, Alderman Newington?
Uh, as per officer's recommendation, I suppose. Just talking about that shading issue, it's, um, you know, this is an example of where trying to explain every scenario in a planning scheme when the house that's going to be shaded is going to be shaded anyway. So, you know, so we've got to use our discretion to be sensible about these sort of things and not get too pedantic about what the rules might say. I think, uh, as I said before, I think, uh, make it, let it happen.
Thank you. So, the, uh, motion is the officer's recommendation for approval, subject to conditions of advice. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Eleven point three point two is a development application at eighty-nine Germain Court, Sanford, for kennels. I think, sorry? Alderman Walker, you moved it. Thank you. Do I have a second, please?
Yes, I'll second it.
Thank you, Alderman Von Berto. Alderman Walker?
As per the deputation and officer's recommendation.
Thank you, Alderman.
Uh, likewise, Mr Mayor.
Other speakers? In that case, uh, I guess there's no need for write a reply. I'll put the motion there, which is the officer's recommendation for approval. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Eleven point three point three is a development application at sixteen Wellington Road, Lindisfarne, for three multiple dwellings. Alderman Blomley?
Thank you, Miss Smith. Uh, I've circulated a, an alternate motion, Mr Mayor.
Do we have a second, please? Uh, Alderman Newington, thank you. Alderman Blomley?
Mr Mayor, thank you. And, uh, from the outset, may I say that, uh, I was most impressed with this DA and indeed the, um, the presentation from the proponent, uh, Mr, uh, Mr Ward this evening. And I note to the officer's report, there's only one hurdle that this DA fails to clear, and that being performance criteria ten point four point three P two. And as were advised, the conjoined dwellings do not have open space that is conveniently located in relation to a habitable room. Now, we all know that our planning office is provided by us in alliance with and within the parameters of the Clarence interim planning scheme 2015. So, we're called upon to exercise discretion, and dare I say, some common sense. And as I said, in my view, this is a fantastic development. Frankly, this is the type of forward-looking and smart development that we ought to be encouraging in our city. These three-bedroom, two-story townhouses with, will both have two-car engaged garage on the ground floor. Both dwellings will have a staircase and a lift, and both dwellings will have large balconies running off the lounge, dining, kitchen on the upper level. That is, for the main habitable areas of the dwellings, the balcony decks will provide private open space. In short, these dwellings have been designed to be low maintenance, easy access, with private open space provided by the generous sized balconies running off the habitable areas of the townhouses. It's the type of smart development that I have every confidence will meet market demand. And if it doesn't, that's not our issue. I have every confidence that this development, this smart development, has been designed with a view to the demographics of Lindisfarne and the market demand of this suburb. Mr Mayor, simply put, ultimately, the market will dictate the level of interest in these dwellings. I'll hazard the guess that the purchasers, or indeed the renters of these dwellings, um, will most likely not be of young childbearing age and unlikely to want to spend their weekends pushing a mower around their yard. I congratulate the proponents as this is the type of smart visionary development that we ought to be encouraging in suburbs such as my own of Lindisfarne. I commend the motion.
Thank you. Alderman Newington?
Um, well, along the same theme, I suppose, um, is what, um, Alderman Blomley started there. I mean, when I first read it and said that, you know, because it wasn't a, a public, sorry, a private open space on the ground, I mean, and, you know, and then finding out that it doesn't actually specify that it needs to be on the ground, I just can't see how we could knock it back on, on that point. But also too, I mean, being innovative in the way that we live and the way that we build our houses these days, if we get that restrictive and prescriptive in things, we won't come up with innovative ways. And I mean, people these days, I mean, if it was, if it was an apartment or, or a unit, there'd be no problem. But because it's a, it's a, um, or a conjoined house, it, it's no longer our case. I mean, I just don't get it. I think it's a, it's a great development. I think we certainly should be supporting it.
Other speakers? Alderman James?
Yes, look, um, uh, Mr Mayor, if this motion is not carried, I foreshadow the officer's recommendation. The, the point about, uh, this proposal is that it's my understanding that there was never any discussion about the public open space on the upper level. And during the course of debate, has out of the blue come this proposal that the performance criteria are not specific in relation to where the public open space or area is located? The officers have made a decision, and they're the experts, in particularly in relation to performance criteria ten point four point three P two. And it says quite clearly in the recommendation, as the private open space for the eastern conjoined dwelling is not capable, is not capable of serving as an extension to the dwelling for dining, et cetera, et cetera, then it's, does not satisfy that performance criteria. So, if you're going to use a broad brush approach and say, look, we've got to basically use common sense to these issues and therefore not necessarily abide by the rules as distinct from what is smart development, which was mentioned by one of the previous speakers, then we might as well say, look, the, the officers, the technical branch of this particular organization is really not covering all these bases, in particular this particular performance criteria. If the application had have said, if the application, development application had stated that there was, um, and there was agreement at the time of launchment, that, that may be a possibility, I think that there would have been some discussion in relation to it at that time. But my understanding is that it was discussed, but at the same time, attention was drawn to this particular fact that it needed to have that public opens, uh, that hope, pro, public open area, private open space on the lower floor as in accordance with the acceptable solutions. If it goes to appeal, then, or to mediation before appeal, then there may be an opportunity to discuss and, and, uh, the parties may come to some agreement. But on the basis of the application, which did not particularly raise the question, nor did it need the, the officer's support in relation to the private open space being somewhere else in the building other than on the lower ground floor, then I think we need to go with the officer's recommendation because that is the basis of interpretation of the performance criteria in accordance with the Infram planning, Clarence's Infram Planning Scheme of 2015. I do not support this, Mr Mayor. I believe the officers have a. I do not support this, Mr Mayor. I believe the officers have it right. And therefore, if this motion that's before the chair is unsuccessful, I foreshadow the officer's recommendation.
Excellent. Alderman James. Other speakers? Alderman Von Berta?
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Uh, Mr Mayor, I can't support this, uh, alternative motion. When Alderman Newington actually says that it does meet the private open space requirements, it actually, according to the officers, does not. On page one hundred and four, it says the conjoined dwelling balcony, balconies are two point two metres wide and would provide an area capable of serving as an extension of the lounge for the, for outdoor relaxation and would receive adequate sunlight due to their northern orient, orientation. However, due to the width, these areas are not considered to provide a suitable area for dining, entertaining and children's play. Oh, into this, they have not been included in the private open space and overshadowing assessment. I actually believe, and I have some experience in early childhood education, when Alderman Blomley says that we can't consider the market, that's true. However, these particular dwellings are actually being put to us as being perhaps for families or perhaps for people who are a little bit past the family stage. However, we look at an area being able to accommodate relaxation, recreation, dining, entertaining and children's play. Having been involved with young children over a long period of time in a professional setting, I actually believe that trying to accommodate all of these various uses in the area of a narrow deck is not appropriate. So I'm right behind the officers in what they are saying. As far as the planning scheme is concerned, there needs to be private open space that is accessible from a habitable area. And if you look at the ground pri- private open space, what the officers are saying is that is not accept, accessible from a habitable area. In actual fact, you have to go downstairs either by the stairs or by a lift and then you go through a laundry. Or you go out the front door and round the car parking, uh, the car entrance area and to the private open space. In the information that has been provided to us by the proponent, and I thank them very much because it was detailed and was provided in a timely manner, it actually notes that if required, we can make the decks slightly bigger to be twenty-four square metres. So I think that is something, well, I don't think, I know that is something that I would actually like to see because neither they nor us know whether these particular dwellings are going to actually be for a couple or for a family that has young children. So I would like to actually see that the development caters for the possibility of young children. Thank you.
Other speakers? Alderman Walker?
Look, it might not be totally germane to every part of the planning scheme, but the fact of the matter is, and this won't be the consideration that one decides to support or not support this motion. Aging in place is something that is to be desired. Having the ability to downsize within your own community with your own social networks, uh, access to, to the other services that you've been using is something that this council, uh, should aspire to. And this is what this is, is largely catering for. It's the dozens, uh, and dozens of homeowners sitting on houses in Lindisfarne with four bedrooms and a lovely big backyard that are desperate to downsize and stay within their community and age in place. And they're not, they're not making that transition because there is, uh, there's not the opportunity. I can see that on planning grounds, but I would, I would note that. As, as far as the open space goes, the kitchen's upstairs, the outlook's upstairs. Um, this is, is the area that's going to be wanted to be habitable. Downstairs, it's reconfigured, that's not going to be the area of desire to be using for the private open spaces. It'll be more of a token open space, just to comply with the rules. So, um, I appreciate that this alternate motion was drafted. I appreciate the deputation provided. And, um, in consideration of the matter and, and where we've got to, I will be supporting this alternate motion.
Alder?
Yeah, I'd like to, through you of course, compliment Alderman James's contribution. I'll also see if we could get a written contribution of it because I think it will act as a wonderful guide to future times when officers make decisions.
Is that being recorded in the minutes? And on video?
Certainly is.
Well, I've got no objection to it at all.
You might be reminded.
Can, can we have a quarter here? And Alderman Mulder, can you press the argument on the planning matter before us, please?
It, this one actually doesn't comply with performance criteria too. The sixty metres of private open space isn't conveniently located for outdoor use. It's on the other side of a shared driveway. It's not oriented to the sunlight being on the south side and only getting one hour of sunlight of the day, which is really insufficient. But the balconies are two point five metres wide when they should be four metres to comply. But there are reasons for approving. These are minor variations to the scheme. They're of no concern to neighbours and didn't raise them. And the amenity and functionality of the, of the development is surely a matter for potential, for future buyers in this case. On that point, I note that the representations on this particular issue had nothing to do with overshadowing or, um, with, um, overlooking. But they were about the loc, about the, um, uh, where we're going to put the, um, representations were not about the location of the balconies or their size, but about where the waste bins should go. So on that basis, I think common sense says that we approve this one.
Write a reply, Alderman Blomley?
Oh, thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, there's a lot I could say along similar vein with the previous speaker, but I won't waste this council's time. I just commend the motion.
Um, the motion before the chair is as presented by Alderman Blomley. It's an alternative motion. It's on the screen. All those in favour? Against, the motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is three, eleven point three point four, which is development application, uh, at several properties in Cambridge Road. General Manager?
Free, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, um, we have received, as we encaged earlier today, from the architects on behalf of the proponent, seeking to withdraw the application on the basis of following consideration that having their reading of the draft report, they want to substantially alter the application and submitted an amended application. Now, procedurally, um, council can still deal with the matter. It's, it's on the agenda or the council, or council alternatively can agree to withdraw the matter from consideration.
Look, I've got a point of order, Mr Mayor. Look, this is the last minute that we are, basically have this decision or, or a contribution put to us. Why wasn't it done on Friday? Why is it now, at the time of discussing this, that we have decided that, that it should be withdrawn? I, I think that is contrary to what we've done in the past.
You've made the point of order and a valid question, General Manager.
Free, Mr Mayor. We only received the application to withdraw this morning, hence why I didn't raise it on Friday. Uh, and within council's actual policy in relation to withdrawal, but it's quite in order given that they submitted the request in writing and paid the withdrawal fee.
Alderman Blomley?
Mr Mayor, that being the case, I move the motion. We think we can draw of the motion.
Okay.
General, sorry.
Uh, it is a procedural matter. All those in favour of withdrawal? Against, the motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is eleven point three point five, development application at thirty-seven A Bridge Street, Richmond for multiple dwellings, food service and general retail and hire. Alderman Pearce, thank you. Do we have a second up? Alderman Newington, thank you. Alma Pearce?
Uh, the, the application to develop food services, general retail and hire at thirty-seven A Richmond. Now, I know some people were a bit concerned about, uh, the cashing loo, but jeez, I've been up there fair times and like Alderman Chong, I'm on the Richmond Advisory Committee. Jeez, I tell you what, you need some more car parking there. So I'm certainly, do believe the officers have got it right by requesting cashing loo for additional car parking. This is quite a large development, as we know, and talking to the officers, now it's deficient in car parking. It will be a very good development when completed, but, uh, you know, there's a lot of, lot of room it's going to take up. And to me, this will never survive unless we do something with additional car parking. So I believe we've got to take the money for this. It's a very good development, I think. It's a very big development and, uh, you know, it's certainly going to make, uh, the character of Richmond, uh, got to say, slightly different to what it is today. So I think we should support the officer's recommendation.
To Alderman Newington?
Uh, I want to make one point, I suppose. It's, uh, with cashing loo, I suppose, certainly you need more car parking down in, uh, in, uh, in Richmond and the development of this scale and size, it, I think it could be a little bit more easy to absorb. So I just wanted to go back to my, the previous one, we looked at, I think, fifty thousand dollars for something in Rosy for something they don't own and getting started, I just think, you know, we just need to go back and look at that sort of issue because they still haven't done anything yet. But it's not really related to this, but I think great, great proposal. I think we should all support it.
Other speakers? Alderman James?
Yeah, look, I, I rise to support the recommendation and I did take on board the previous speaker's comments in relation to, he did mention Victoria Esconard and, and the other matter where this council decided to downsize in relation to the cashing loo for car parking. So I'm really glad, Mr Mayor, that Alderman Newington has in fact supported this and for the cashing loo of seventy-seven thousand, which is tremendous because Richmond really needs this sort of money and, uh, uh, to actually expand and long-term planning in relation to, uh, cashing loo and, uh, providing part car parking space. So having said that, I don't need to say any more, but I'd be interested to hear what a couple of other members of the council would be prepared to say in relation or in support of this. So I eagerly await and hear their comments.
James, other speaker. So Alderman Chong?
Just a question through you, Mr Mayor. Um, I understand there is a, a description of how many car park places we could actually put in the Franklin Street car park? If there was a proposal to do something like that?
Graham, are you able to assist us?
Sorry, can I just bring the plan up to the front counter? Uh, sorry. Uh, it's a very rough plan. I can rock it up. Um, it shows fifty-five, um, um, car spaces. It's a very rough plan just done at the moment. And in doing that, we would, we would also consider, is it all just for car parking or should we consider buses or how would we orientate the actual time?
Other speakers? Uh, Alderman Walker was first, uh, previously on his feet.
Uh, look, it's a, it's a quality development complies and a calculation has been made for cashing loo car parking. When you think, uh, there's an issue with such calculations, one should challenge it. I know that I certainly challenged it around Belray U K, the, uh, the calculation around activity for allied health in that, uh, the very health hub was wrong. Uh, the application and the calculation, I believe, was, was incorrect also with the doctor's surgery there. Um, couldn't convince my colleagues around the table at the time, unfortunately. And indeed, uh, I believe that, that council is being overly excessive in what it's expecting for something along the s plan previously. So that's where I stand and I support this motion as it is.
Thank you, Alderman Mulder?
You know, um, I think seventy-seven thousand dollars is a very large contribution if you're asking it a start-up business. If it is required, it, we shouldn't be extracting it until such time as we are ready to build a car park. There is no strategic management plan for this area to cope with traffic or parking volumes or relocation of the bus in order to create more parking spaces to meet the demand, to meet the demand that hasn't even been quantified. The total number of car parking in space is required to accommodate local and visitor parking in the village has not been assessed. Sufficient cashing loo payments have previously been obtained, I would argue, to maximise the car parking spaces in the Franklin Street car park and bus exchange. And at a more deep level, I think that the role of government is to provide the infrastructure and to recoup the cost by user charges. Should we discover that multi-level car parks need to, are needed to cope with the parking requirements of a commercial district, this should be built and operated on a fee-for-service basis by either government or private enterprise. Should, perchance, and I don't like my chances, um, I not, uh, that this motion is not supported, I foreshadow the motion previously suggested.
Excellent. Other speakers? Alderman Warren?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm struggling to imagine a multi-story car park that might blend in with Richmond character. Um, but also I see issues with not requiring a payment upfront because we don't know if the business would be viable or even still operating when the car park is built. The business could change hands, uh, there could still be a demand for parking and we've lost the opportunity to get a payment. So I believe it makes perfect sense and it's fair and it's equitable. It's what we do with all the other businesses. So I believe that it's perfectly reasonable to accept seventy-seven thousand upfront.
Thank you. Other speakers? Write a reply, Alderman Pearce?
Uh, Mayor, I thank Alderman for their contribution and I seek your support.
Thank you. The motion is the officer's recommendation as presented on the board. All those in favour? Against, the motion is carried. And that concludes our businesses of planning authority this evening. Nothing under customer service, so we move on to asset management. And eleven point five point one, Begonia Street, collection of traffic origin destination data.
Read the recommendation, Mayor.
Do we have a second please?
No, I'll second that.
Thank you, Alderman Von Berta. Alderman Pearce?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mayor, as we know, we've talked about Begonia Street collecting the data. Now, to me, this is the way to go. I mean, it's, it's costly, but at least it's got a chance to bring this back from, from the staff and to Alderman to have a look at this and see the best solution for Begonia Street. As I said, this has been going on for many, many years. If you read one point three on page one seven one, explains it completely. There was a subdivision going next door. We thought this may alleviate the, this problem, but no, no, the planning commission said, no, you cannot do that. So I believe this is the right way to go. Let us have a look at the data. Let's see with, along with the officers at a workshop, what's happening and let's us make a decision. Because, you know, it's up to us in consideration for any future upgrade, it is important to understand the traffic movement and where people are coming and going. So I support the recommendation.
Thank you. Alderman Von Berta?
No, Mr Mayor.
Other speakers? Alderman Mulder, are you shaping to speak? Sorry, I'm just...
I'm not in a rush to get to my feet, but if someone else wants to, but I'll, having the call, I'll take. Um, I, I support this and, um, I think it, it probably comes out of, um, an issue that I raised some time ago. But the best solution to Flagstaff Gully, to the problem with Begonia Street, is to either close it or to build an alternative route through the extension of Flagstaff Gully Link. And those are the solutions that, um, this limited, uh, range of data would not help us build a case for. What it will, what we, so, um, what I have done is, um, I have foreshadowed, uh, I am formally foreshadowing that, um, after this motion, I will bring another one which seeks to extend the data collection, but not at our cost, at the cost of the state government, because any bypass or extension of Flagstaff Gully Link really is a matter for them as it would be a road connecting to existing highways. So, um, how that would be a council road, uh, it should never be a council road. So, um, the, the motion that I've circulated, I've foreshadowed, I support the one of Alderman Pearce, um, and this will be moved as a separate motion, not incorporated into this.
Oh, procedurally, I'll deal with this as a A, which is on the table before us at the moment, and a B, uh, as a second, uh, motion consecutively within the same agenda item. So, um, I, I'll take that foreshadowed B at this stage, but we'll deal with, uh, the motion before us at the moment.
I've, I've proposed that it be an additional motion which conforms with...
Yeah, and, uh, I think we're in, we're yelling at each other in agreement, furious agreement. So, um, let's go back to the topic, the agenda item, which is the, uh, the, the motion before us at the moment. Um, Alderman Warren, sorry, I did need to explain how we'd fit that in.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, look, I have no objection to making... Look, I have no objection to making evidence-based decisions, so I commend Alderman Pearce on his motion to collect more data. My only concern around this is that we're looking at the symptom rather than the cause, and you don't address traffic problems by building more roads, as a yesterday's solution to tomorrow's problem, and I think that the bigger picture of addressing traffic congestion, improving public transport, may make this cease to be an issue, and I think we need to look at those, those other problems, as to why there are so many cars not using the highway, if that is indeed the case, but the data will tell us that, so I support the motion.
Other speakers. Write a reply, Alderman Pearce.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I did have a look at Alderman Mulder's other motion, and one thing that worried me about that...
We'll talk about that one in a minute.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just, this is important, Mayor, because the government cannot make a decision if it wishes to use ferries, tunnels, free buses, and whatever. Now, I'm trying to get something done for Begonia Street, and going any further than that at the moment...
You'll have an opportunity to speak to that in a moment.
Yes, I'm just saying, going any further at the moment, I'm just supporting this recommendation in front of us.
Thank you, I note that, Alderman Pearce. So the motion before the chair at the moment is as presented on the board, the officer's recommendation, all those in favour? That's carried unanimously, and now, foreshadowed additional part under this agenda item.
There I am with the motion that was circulated over the weekend and again tonight.
Do we have a second to this foreshadowed addition? Thank you, Alderman James. Alderman Mulder.
I'll be brief, I think...
Look, before we proceed, sorry, does everyone have a copy of what's on the table before the chair? Thank you, Alderman Mulder, please.
Yep. The motion that I'm moving is simply to collect wider data, and the data, the reason that it wasn't, I didn't attempt to do the one, because we have just passed a motion which satisfies all the requirements of the one that we previously debated in this chamber. What I'm trying to do, though, is I'm trying to lift the picture. I'm trying to suggest that, that we don't, can't take Begonia Street in isolation. All that data will do is to help us to work out what particular matters needed to be to address the issues that arise from the volumes of traffic using Begonia Street. This is related to that, and the original motion was always done in the context of trying to discover an alternate route for the traffic that is now using Begonia Street, and to suggest has been done that, you know, we need to encourage greater use of public transport. If you talk to the people on Begonia Street, you will see their major complaint is tradesmen running backwards and forwards, from Sorrel to the Norkey, and out to all the developments going on, in Tranmere and Howra, and down Lordedale South Arm. That volume, those volumes are traders. Now, you're not going to get traders putting their tools and trade and their equipment, you know, onto a bus. These are people who are going to need their cars, they're their workplaces, and they carry their equipment, so whatever we do, therefore, a long, long time to come, be they driven by petrol or electricity, as Mr Shorten would have us do, there will be a need for a traffic corridor that takes vehicles of some description, and whilst ever, the bridge has got the problems that it has, the cloverleaf at, on the Brookah Highway has got the problems, and it's mostly eastern shore traffic queued up on those cloverleafs time and time again, we will not get a proper solution to, that reduces the volume on Begonia Street, which is the ultimate aim, I think, of all our motions and all our desires. So that is why I'm just suggesting, at no cost to us, we ask the state government to collect data if they haven't already, and they may already have this data, but to put that together with the stuff that we have got, to make a sensible strategic solution about the other issues around Begonia Street. So I just commend the motion.
Thank you. Alderman James. Other speakers. Alderman Pearce.
Mayor, look, I have nothing, I have no worries with Alderman Mulder's motion, but personally, I think it's the wrong time. I reckon we should be looking at Begonia Street, seeing what we can find out of the information, and then, maybe we can find something and give it to the state government, say, we've found this, this, and this, instead of just saying straight away, give it to the state government. As I said, the state government is not sure what it's doing, ferries, tunnels, free buses, it's got no idea at the moment. It could make a decision and get on with it, but it's not, and that's what really worries me about confusing the issue. I would have liked to have seen us have a workshop first, get the data out the way, and then maybe this motion comes forward then. I just think this motion's just a bit premature.
Thank you, Alderman Pearce. Alderman Warren.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, look, I think the reasoning in this is flawed, and I agree with Alderman Pearce. I think, you know, I've used Begonia Street, I use it reluctantly, because it's not a fun road to travel, and that's not just because of the gravel. I would much prefer to drive on the highway, as I'm sure all the tradies would, if there were less cars on it, so I'm not in any way suggesting that tradies should put their tools on the bus, because that would be silly, but I am suggesting if we reduce the number of single-occupant cars on our major arteries, then those people who do need to use their vehicles for work would be better able to use the existing roads that are intended for that purpose. So I just, I agree with Alderman Pearce that this is premature, and I won't be...
Thank you. Other speakers. Alderman Von Berto, then Walker.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, I just have a bit of a concern that we might be getting the evidence to support Alderman Mulder's desired intent, so that's my issue of concern. When I look at the heading note, the extension of Flagstaff Gully Link Road to the Eastern Highway provides the missing link in an eastern shore state highway connecting Lordedale to the Bowan Bridge and bypassing the eastern end of the Tasman Bridge. It looks pretty much like a done deal, as far as I can see from this motion, so I just have a little bit of a concern as to the reasoning behind getting this information, which I'm wondering whether we'll get it in this century or next, so that's my issue of concern.
Alderman Walker.
Thank you. Bishop, if this motion, when you come to voting at it, hopefully in the next ninety seconds, if you feel that this impedes Alderman Pearce's previous motion, don't vote for it. I don't believe it impedes it, I do believe it might give us a wider amount of information and useful information, and I do note the comments around the Flagstaff Gully Link Road, and that's a great bit of history to always rake over now and again. I'm not going to do it tonight, but I would say this, what this data will do, potentially, is maybe support that or disprove it, so if we can have this without impeding Alderman Pearce's previous motion, why wouldn't you support it?
Write a reply, Alderman Mulder.
Very much. Just a couple of points there. Yes, it might, the evidence might support Flagstaff Gully Link Road, but it also runs the great risk that it doesn't, that there might be, there might be other solutions that pop out of this data, like better access on the eastern shore from Tasman Highway to Eastern Highway, where freight vehicles can use it, but at the moment, they can't because of the short merging loads and street grade, and trucks don't like to stop, they can't use Begonia Street. So it, the evidence might actually lead us to a different conclusion, but what I'm trying to say is that this is a potential solution, if the evidence supports it, then of course the case is built. But to stand there and say that you don't want to engage in the exercise, just in case the evidence does support something, I think, you know, we've got to go look at it, we've got to be, we've got to look at the evidence. And also, to address Alderman Pearce's concern, this is not worrying, this is not muddying the waters. It's high time the state government and councils started to look at these things in a strategic perspective, and looking ahead to see what the potential requirements are, and in that broader context, start doing local solutions. And I support that principle too, and what I have put forward is done nothing but putting a strategic framework. If the state government chooses not to take this, that's their business, and we, but we will still have the data to deal with Begonia Street, the way Alderman Pearce thinks we should. The other thing I might say is that the government is at the moment investigating and developing and building such a strategy. All we are doing is giving them an opportunity to say, here, here is some advice, here is some potentials, and if the data stacks up to prove it, we will stand a better chance of getting the result that I think we should have. If the data doesn't support it, then we can bury the Flagstaff Link once and for all, and everyone on, and everyone on Garden Creek Road, Gilster Bay Creek Road will be happy, and all the people in Begonia Street, I think, are still going to be unhappy. So, you know, I just take this point back. Local solutions should fit within a broader strategic framework of traffic management within the southern region, but the traffic, the broader stuff within the, the ideas and solutions that come out of the broader, out of the broader strategy, also need to be evidence-based, and that is what this motion is trying to do.
Thank you. So the motion is from Alderman Mulder, which is on the screen there. All those in favour? The motion is carried. Sorry, I got that seven five. I counted seven five. All right, let's, let's call that a vote again. All those in favour? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Against? One, two, three, four, five. Thank you. Nothing under Financial Management. Moving on to Governance, Alderman's Walker and Chong have declared an interest, we'll just wait while they leave the room. So, eleven point seven point one is that council approves community support grants up to fifteen thousand four hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty-five cents, as per attached schedule. Could I have a move or a second, please? Thank you, Alderman James. Second to Alderman Pearce. Alderman James, would you like to speak to the motion? Alderman Pearce?
No, I'm happy.
Does anyone care to speak to this motion? Now, case will put the motion, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. Can we recall the two? Alderman, please. So, item eleven point seven point two, community consultation on declaration of Billreap Beach Park and surrounding areas as a smoke-free zone under the Public Health Act. Move to Alderman Ewington, thank you. Second to Alderman Kennedy. Alderman Ewington, would you like to speak to it?
Well, I think we should make it a deere area. I mean, the one definition I think we should try, I always thought this, and I was a good chance for it, so it's not about distance from someone or distance from an entrance, it's about whether the smoke gets in someone else's lungs, and that's the easy way to, you know, you see these people saying, oh, I'm three metres away, four metres away, but still, they don't get it that it blows in, and the other thing I'd like to do is get more wardens to walk around and find people dropping cigarettes everywhere, drives me nuts, I have to go and pick them up outside, you know, fitness centre, people walking in, dropping butts on the ground, you go up and you say, look, you say, you know, don't smoke, it's a smoke-free site, so they put it in front of you, and it's like, they don't get it. So if we could do the two, I'd be really happy, but no, that's a great vision, I think we should expand this, you know, as much as we possibly can.
Other speakers. Alderman Mulder, and then Alderman Walker.
But just as an overview, we're continually to tighten this tobacco stuff as we should, but I'd sometimes wonder, are we going, as tobacco gradually becomes illegal, are we going to make marijuana compulsory? So, you know, I think that there's some societal pressures here, tobacco is a health hazard, marijuana may not be, according to some, but when this issue was first raised about designated smoking areas, and I was in the legislative council, I, the point I made then, and I make it again now, is that a much better way would be that if we designated smoking areas rather than non-smoking areas, we could then create spaces, if institutions like the Bellreap Oval wanted to, you know, to have smoking, then people could go to a designated area, designated area where, you know, you would cut the bridge, cut the minimisation and all the rest of it. So this stuff's around the wrong way, and Alderman Ewington is right, I mean, you know, it's not how far you are away, it's where the wind blows it, and we all know what a windy place Tasmania can be, so, you know, this is fine, and of course I support it, but I'll just make the observation, I think this thing we've got to cut for the horse, and we really do need to talk about, every public place needs to have an area that's a designated smoking area, where people can, where we can minimise the risk of secondary smoking. And I also note that with some turbulence at some stage, there's even a law now against parents smoking in a car where children are.
Still say it?
I still, I'm sure you still say it done, and I'm sure, but it's just one of those horribly unenforceable things, but there we have a law to say it anyway, and as you say, it doesn't do any effect. Here's something that can be policed, but how much easier would it be to police it if there was a designated area, and you could only smoke in those areas?
Walker.
I do have a few concerns with this motion, the intent is good, but the road to hell is paved with good intentions, and the hell here is what it might be like for some of the local residents in some of the nearby streets, because what we're basically saying is, quite rightly, we don't want just smoking in the Bellreap Beach Park, or the beach, and we've drawn this blue line, and then that pushes it into areas like Church Street. So what's likely to happen from this is that people will exit the ground, and they'll be outside somebody's house, probably, you know, six metres from their bedroom or their kitchen, maybe their open deck, and there for fifteen minutes chatting with their mates, smoking away. All to what end? To make the Oval virtuous for not being a smoke-free, for full being a smoke-free facility. If we're dynamic about this, and I understand that, you know, there are good reasons to make venues a smoke-free, but as has been mentioned by another speaker on this matter, people are going to smoke, so you kind of want a strategic zone where that's going to happen, not what is likely to happen, which is it's going to start being outside people's houses late at night for extended periods of time. Maybe there's an opportunity to renegotiate the lease with Bonson Arena to clip back a bit of ground that wouldn't be part of their facility, so they could still make that claim, and that could be the area, but it's profoundly unrealistic to expect that smoking isn't going to occur when many people are attending. It's going to occur, and what this is likely to do is make it occur right outside people's houses. I do have real concerns about this, intent being good, but the likely consequences being diabolical.
Thank you, Mayor. Being a non-smoker, I support the recommendation, but look, the recommendation does say community consultation, that's what it does say, and that's what we're doing, and I totally agree. Now, a club I'm involved with, and it's a bit of a council building, and we're talking to John Judge, and John said, no smoking on the balcony, and that's fine, but when I took it back to the committee, they said, well, where can we smoke? What is council providing for the smoker? So I take Alderman Mulder's point of view too, you know, I totally agree with this and community consultation, and I hope it, you know, I hope when we do the consultation, it gets through, but people are saying, where can we smoke? What is council doing where we can go and smoke? So, and, you know, in any club, you'll find there's a hell of a lot of smokers, I hate to say it, they're playing sport one minute and smoking the next, but, you know, that's, that's, as Alderman Ennington said, you know, outside a health centre, that's what they do, so, you know, it's never going to stop. So maybe somewhere... So, maybe somewhere along the line, we should be looking at places where people can smoke, where we're stopping it at our buildings.
Perhaps it might be suggested in our public consultation.
Yeah, well, that's it. Good thinking.
Other speakers? Right reply, Alderman Newington?
Valuable points to consider, Alderman Walker's part there about pushing, that is a legitimate concern, I think, that we push it out, but I suppose that's, but putting, that's not a reason not to do this sort of stuff, so I think we've really got to, you know, lead from the front, and I think all our public open spaces should be at that point, and, you know, I mean, as Alderman Kennedy said to me then, there's plenty of places now where you can't smoke where you used to, where 20 years ago doing that would have been considered silly, you know, whether it was, you know, going to a back tetter or walking around a supermarket or all those, sitting in a plane or bus, you know, but I think we've got to go down this path, and it's, you know, one step at a time. I think the community consultation gives us the opportunity to hear those views, but I certainly don't think the focus should be on where we can find places for people to smoke, it should be on how do we encourage and make it more difficult for them to do that. I mean, I think we should go up and talk about that too. They're right, but that's up to them to find the places to do it, not for us to provide the spaces for it. Might be a bit harsh, but, you know, I think that's the way we've got to go.
Thank you. The motion before the chair is the officer's recommendation. All those in favour? Against? Carried. Item 11.7.3 is a revised Australia Day Awards Committee constitution. Thank you, Alderman Kennedy, second to Alderman Blomley. Would you like to speak to it? Would you like to speak to it? I might just add that it's just tidying it up and putting it into a format that's consistent with other council constitutions. So, if there's any questions at all, any other speakers? Put the motion, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. Thank you. 11.7.4, request all of the boundaries of the Hara and Rokeby and introduce new suburb Hara Gardens, Alderman Blomley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to, I'd circulate an alternative motion, I believe colleagues...
Do we have a second please? Thank you, Alderman Peers. Alderman Blomley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, we all know that beyond any shadow of a doubt, Clarence is the best place to live. In fact, on the most recently available data, we've seen our population balloon by an additional four and a half thousand people, 8.6%, who have chosen to live in our own city. With which growth in perspective, over the same period, Tasmanian population has increased by 6.5%. Clarence is a popular place in which to live. When asked what makes Clarence a preferred place to live, the most common response is lifestyle, with our extensive coastline, popular recreational beaches, and more than one-third of our city being natural bushland. Who can blame them? With a resident population of 57,000, our city is second only in terms of population along system, but as we know, it's first on every other indicator. For many years now, or for at least when I was first elected to this council in 2000, the area between Hara and Rokeby has been colloquially known as Hara Gardens. And as we all know, Hara Gardens is based on a small commercial centre and adjoining residential development. It is perceived by the community and its residents as a locality in its own right, with access separate from both existing neighbouring suburbs. And in fact, if anyone else in this chamber, Mr. Mayor, utilised the distribution services of Tasmanian catalogues for a council-wide mail-out during the last elections, they would have known that Hara Gardens is actually listed by that business as one of the recognised distribution areas in our city. As our city continues to grow, with the corresponding upward pressure on housing stock, the area between Hara and Rokeby, there was once paddocks, is progressively becoming covered by houses. And to meet the demand of Hobart's tight housing market, there's been significant interest in developing the area locally known as Hara Gardens. And as outlined in our officer's report, council has received several approaches for the formalisation of that name. Collectively, landowners in the Hara Gardens area plan to release an additional 272 residential lots onto the market, which will significantly improve both the availability and affordability of housing in southern Tasmania. Undoubtedly, the release of these additional 272 building lots will go some way to positively address associated social challenges caused by the current undersupply of housing stock in southern Tasmania. It's also important to note, Mr. Mayor, that I've been assured by one of the landowners and potential developers, that it is envisaged that social, or rather affordable, housing will be a component of their proposed development. Mr. Mayor, in my mind, what this motion is seeking to do really is a no-brainer. I mean, this really isn't and shouldn't be rocket science. The area in question is well-known and widely recognised as Hara Gardens. Tonight is not about making decisions whether or not we make a submission to the Nomenclature Board. In fact, as you've been advised in the officer's report, we couldn't do this, even if you wanted to this evening. As a key component of any submission, as outlined in section 37 subsection 2B of the Nomenclature Board's Rules of Place Names in Tasmania stipulates that, it has to be demonstrated that the submission has very strong community support that is supported by the results of a broad-based community survey. Mr. Mayor, my motion this evening is not about spruiking for the formalisation of Hara Gardens, although I am firmly of the view this ought to occur. My motion tonight is about how this council chooses to engage with and treat our key stakeholders. This motion should be one about engaging with our community to ascertain their views on the formalisation of Hara Gardens. If after the community consultation has occurred and there is strong support for the formalisation of Hara Gardens, then we would act on it. So, to ensure we don't put the cart before the horse or arrogantly dismiss out of hand the approach this council has received, in my view, Mr. Mayor, we are duty-bound, we must engage with our community, it is what they deserve, and simply put, it is what we've all been elected to do, and that is what this motion is all about. Mr. Mayor, I thank colleagues for their consideration and seek their support.
Thank you, Alderman Peers.
Thank you, Mayor. Look, I totally agree, Alderman Blomley, ever since I've, you know, for the last 20 years, it's been known as Hara Gardens. And I mean, as much as you want to put arguments for the other side, I mean, it has, and the simple fact is that, and I can see many, many benefits for this lovely piece of land having a proper name. And I believe it is that close to Hara. We look at the people that own land there, and they're saying, let's change the name. I think it should be, I just don't know why we wouldn't do it and jump on board and say, this is a marvellous piece of land, it's been known as Hara Gardens for about 20 years, let's just get on and support a name change.
Alderman Mulder?
I don't agree at all, Mr. Mayor. I actually will foreshadow the officer's recommendation, because it actually addresses the criteria that the Nomenclature Board had actually put out. Localities are to be contiguous communities of interest. They are usually bounded by natural or sometimes man-made features like highways that differentiate them from their neighbours. You need to get a sense you're moving from one locality to another. This is not the case here. We have, we will have consecutive number houses in both private areas, because that top section of Rokeby was from Canook Street, north was a private area, I know, I bought some land there, and I built a house there. And the house I built is at number 40 Tollard Drive, which is, which will be, if this was to ever occur, in Rokeby. The very house next door will be in something called Hara Gardens. So, they are not contiguous suburbs, there is no connection. If you look at Rokeby, originally a contiguous rural community bounded by basically the Clarence Plains catchment area. Then we had Claren and Vale, which had defined geographic boundaries. Then we had Oak Downs, which also has defined boundaries. And the boundary between Oak Downs and Claren and Vale is the creek that runs down past John Paul II School. So, it's a natural boundary and it's a natural community. Now, Hara Gardens, the proposal, has no natural boundaries. It is completely contiguous with the upper parts of Rokeby. What are the parcel of land of Atkins and Joseph Streets? If you look at the map, you will see this garden sort of, it starts at what is colloquially known as Hara Gardens, which is now connected through Tollard Drive, it then goes along the back fences of Tollard Drive, the connections from Kimberley Street, where there's only one, there's a number one, and then obviously it's intended to go in, that will then, there'll be one house with Kimberley Street, Rokeby, number three Kimberley Street, Rokeby, will be Hara Gardens or something. So, it's not, it's not this nice little land. Then, when you have a little look down at Atkins and Joseph Streets, that whole lump of land is back inside Rokeby. And there's some private development going on in there, and there's some private homes going in there by a developer who I would take has not chosen to be party to this application. Then, we get some of the reports that says all the landowners agree. Have a look at the map again, there's a whole block in there that's blown by the Clarence City Council. Now, from the officer's report, quite clearly, we haven't agreed with it. So, Hara Gardens is too, and the name Hara Gardens would be too similar to Hara. That's where the confusion occurs, and I'm sure that's why the Nomenclature Board would not be keen on that name. If you're going to have an area in here, you're better off calling it Skillion Hill, which is what, which is the actual geographic feature that it's on. Or Rokeby Heights, as the, as the people living in the private area colloquially know their suburbs. Or as perhaps the people on the other side of Canook Street know it as Snob Hill. So, the representations, all owners agree, but apparently we don't. The survey general recommends review suburb boundaries in the area. Well, of course, we all think that, that's a good idea, but the surveyor general recommends this review. We all trust they are not representing him, that's what each of those letters say, we trust we are not misrepresenting him. Well, produce his report, produce his review if you think, you know, you're representing right, but there's nothing like that here. I'm sorry, the adjoining part of Rokeby is largely a private homes area and fits the residential character of the new subdivision. There is no case for a suburb based on a boundary fence.
Mulder, other speakers? Alderman James?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The... On page 211, 2.0, it says that 2018, a second request was made by Neil Shepherd and Associates on behalf of the Archdiocese, Malwood Pty Ltd and the Tramia Point Pty Ltd, Mr. Ian Johnson. Now, the, it hasn't been widely circulated, and it's on the basis that the subdivisions particularly would like to have this name changed, because that's basically how it's put forward for us for consideration. I know, and I received, and I think we all received correspondence from Holst Skara, and I supported Malwood. And there were some trying times back in those days, back in the 90s, when Mr. Skara and his Noel Eerian associates, I think, and so on, were putting forward this proposal, which was in fact quite unique in its sense, because it basically covered the hill and made large blocks in accordance with the topography and demographics of the area. So, it's been on the boil in relation to Malwood in particular over the years, and therefore it's, it has been something that I'm sure Mr. Skara is keen to happen. The other interesting point about this is that on page 210, the, and it's already been referred to, the Nomenclature Board and their rules in relation to rules 36 and 37 on 209 and 210. But it's important that 37.2, the place name of a suburb locality, and I quote, "The place name of a suburb locality may be altered if the board is satisfied that the alteration will remove confusion and enhance public safety." And that, I think, has already been addressed by the previous speaker. And the point that I really want to make and emphasise is part 37B, and that is, and I quote, "has very strong community support that is supported by the results of a broad-based community survey." And that, excuse me, uses a name that is distinctive and unique in Australia and has some longstanding association with the area. Now, the motion for us is having a dollar each way. What it's saying is, and we've all read it, I'm sure, that in particular, the council recognises the area colloquially as Hara Gardens, and the council supports in principle. That's in part three. And four, then, the general manager conduct a broad-based community survey to determine whether there is a strong community support for the proposed changes. So, look, you've got a mix match here of proposals which is providing support in principle for this particular proposal, and then, on the other hand, seeking consultation. Now, look, you can either have it one way or the other. If there had have been a broad-based, a broad-based survey, and that had been conducted by the, by Malwood and the Archdiocese, and they did put in a submission in 2017, but we only have three individuals that basically are subdividers in their own right, and they want to obviously have this change, obviously to be able to do what's necessary as subdividers do. And so, so look, I will be not supporting this proposal, but I will be supporting the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. Other speakers? Frank?
Supposedly, we're all about community consultation these days, we want to let everyone have their say, I think it'd be remiss of us not to at least go back out and test what the community feel about this issue. There's plenty of suburbs out there where one house is in one suburb and the next-door neighbour's another suburb. The lack of, and I think, certainly, I mean, in my time, I've always known Hara Gardens as Hara Gardens. And I think if this, and I think some people are going to benefit from this, and they see benefit in doing that, that's why they're asking us to look at this issue. And I think they have every right to do that. If there's a benefit in that because of the, how the suburbs perceived or not perceived, I think, you know, they have a right to do that, and I think we should look at it. If there's community support to do it, great. Just because other people might not be, who don't live in that area that we're looking at, we don't support it, it's really, it's not taking away from anyone, so at least we should look at it. But I think the bigger picture is that we do need to look at the whole corridor through Past Row, Gleep Hill, and the whole thing. I think that would be something we should look at as a group, but, you know, that doesn't mean that this one can't be looked at to start with, and then maybe as part of, you know, future motions, I think we should be looking at the whole thing, you know, possibly down the track. But I don't think there's any harm in going down this path and seeing whether there's community support, because ultimately it should be up to the community above to make that decision and argue their case for or against it, rather than necessarily us making that choice.
Other speakers? Right reply, Alderman Blomley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What an interesting conversation that's been. I mean, I think the selective quoting of the officer's report tonight really has taken the cake. It really has taken the cake. If you read the part of the motion there, it is part four, the general manager on behalf of council conduct a broad-based community survey to determine whether there is strong community support for the proposed changes. That's what it's about. And I refer Alderman James in particular, or Mr. Mayor, I refer council rather, to, as I said in my opening remarks, section 37 subsection 2B of the Nomenclature Board's Rules for Place Names in Tasmania, that stipulates that it has to be demonstrated that the submission has very strong community support that is supported by the results of a broad-based community survey. So, step one is that the owners of the land, or not all of them, but most of them, have petition councils. So, we'd like to have this looked at, considered. Step two, from council having received that request, is actually set out chapter and verse in the rules. You conduct a community-based, broad-based survey, that's what we're doing. So, the selective quoting just does not make sense. And this is, this is probably about the fifth motion tonight that's been selective quoting, an absolute misrepresentation of the facts. This is about us consulting with our community and saying, there's been a proposal, we're a serious professional organisation, we're going to engage with our community, that's what we're going to do. Because hand-on-heart, nearly six months ago, every person in this chamber, we took Clarence Action Network meeting, or in my case, I didn't, or sent a representation, or most of us did, saying, yes, we'll undertake hand-on-heart to consult. And I've seen the video of Alderman, of Alderman, Mr. Mayor, so I know which ones did, and you know which ones were as well. So, this is about community consultation, it's following the rules as set out by the board. Nothing more. I'm not here spruiking Hara Gardens, I'm spruiking the process. We've been approached by some people who are significant rate payers... We've been approached by some people who are significant ratepayers in the city, who significantly contribute to the social and cultural wellbeing of our community, who are going to provide affordable housing, who are going to create additional infrastructure. I mean, and all they're asking for is for us to play by the rules. That's all they're asking for. Mr. Mayor, I commend the motion.
Thank you. So, the motion for the chair is first presented by Alderman Blomley. All those in favor? Against, the motion is carried. Moving on to item twelve, Alderman's question times. There's no matter on notice or answers to questions on notice. Twelve point three, answers to questions previously taken on notice from Alderman Mulder. And there's a response in a minute's, in the agenda paper, sorry, for that. So, moving to questions without notice, and I'll start with Alderman Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two questions. Save me. First one is, can you please advise the operational status of the CCTV cameras at the Rosney Skate Park? Because I understand there was an unfortunate incident there where somebody was injured. There was an altercation. I received an email from a constituent today, which was also copied to Tas Police, and there's concern that the CCTV cameras are not operating.
Mr. Tui.
For you, Mr. Mayor. All four cameras are operational and have been for some time.
And I understand in addition to that, that the person, one person did reference that incident to council, and they've been referred to Tas Poll, who are further investigating it.
The second question I have is, I've had concern raised with me about the concreting of the section of the Bell Reef Path between Wentworth Street and Silwood Avenue. I know that there has been conversation with council about that, and significant concerns raised by people who run on that path or walk on that path as opposed to cycling, and whether there is any possibility of further consultation before that work is done.
Through, Mr. Mayor, yes, I have, thank you, I do have received that query. I haven't yet followed up on it. I will provide an answer in due course, Mr. Mayor.
Via the weekly briefing report, please.
Via the weekly briefing report, yes.
Alderman James.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. First question, apparently at the awards night at Rosney College recently, there was no council representative to present the council prize. Can I have some clarification either from the GM or his two IC in relation to that, please?
I was invited to attend that, and I asked for another Alderman to step in. I can't recall the details of that, but apparently they weren't able to at the last minute. I can get more details if you like.
Yeah, it would be great to have a.
I was disappointed that council wasn't represented there, Alderman James, so you will follow that up.
I heard from a ratepayer who.
Did you have a second question?
Yes, I did. I have. I was going for a jog on Lordedale Beach on Sunday.
Oh, no you weren't.
You should try it, Alderman Blomley. You might lose a bit of weight.
But yeah, the question is, the question is that at the, at Four Bambara Road at Lordedale, the fence line has been undermined to the extent that the corner post is being supported by one of the horizontal beams on that corner point, and two of the wooden droppers are actually hanging on the wire. So, an actual fact, in that area, there has been extensive undermining. Should the fence fall onto the public, who is liable for injury? Who is liable for the injury? And what measures would be taken to rectify the situation?
Take that on notice?
Oh, thank you for that question.
In terms of liability, I have absolutely no idea. I'd have to take that one on notice and try and make some inquiry in relation to it. In terms of rectification works, I think this is a matter that's been before council on, in one guise or another, on numerous occasions. I think council, last time they considered this, directed us to go away and prepare a coastal policy in the absence of a state coastal policy that, as I think Alderman had been made aware through the briefing report, is currently being undertaken and is in progress. I'm not sure of the final delivery date of that, but I would imagine it would still be some months away because it is a very, very complex issue as we know through our probably fifteen or so years of trying to grapple with coastal erosion issues.
I just want to supplement briefly, Mr. Mayor. Number one Bambara has had extensive rock fill actually filled in, and there's also been an extension of that rock fill around into the other property where there's currently development. So, is it one rule for, you know, for one owner and another rule for the other? I would like to know as to whether or not there has been approval given for rock infill.
Not by council.
Through, Mr. Mayor, I think you've, I think if my memory serves me correctly, and I think it does in relation to this, we've provided numerous reports to Alderman in respect of all of these matters. I think we've actually provided detailed briefings in relation to the rock walls that are joining properties. Some of them date back probably twenty, back into the nineties anyway in terms of that. And it may even be that some of those rock walls are contributing in some way, shape, or form to the problems being experienced at other properties along there. As I think we've provided many reports to council that show that erosion around dunes is exacerbated by the hardening of services along coastal foreshores, and that in this instance, it might even be that those previously either approved or at least installed hard barriers are creating some of the additional erosion that's occurring along there. But we have provided many reports to council in respect of this matter over the years.
May we have a update with Four Bambara, please? So, I'll be there.
Alderman Berta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My first question is in relation to the Coal River Gourmet Trail feasibility study. I'm wondering if you can give us an update as to the status of that study? That's the first question. I don't know if you're able to do that now or whether there will be some sort of.
That was a matter of discussion today between myself and the general manager, and I've asked him to prepare a report that goes out to the Alderman in terms of where we're with that.
Thank you. That's lovely. And also, my second question, an update in relation to the status of the STCA. Where are we at in relation to that?
Through, Mr. Mayor. Following council's decision at the last meeting, or the one before, I think the last meeting, I've written to both the secretariat and the other member councils advising that effectively thirtieth of June, council withdraw from the STCA.
To the other councils, Glenorkie and Kingra.
Sorry, I mean.
Glenorkie and Kingra have followed us in terms of their decision. Hobart has decided that they'll undertake a review, and hence, they will be a member for the coming year at least, or liable for ongoing membership for another year, having missed the March deadline.
At no cost?
At no cost.
And the main utopia meeting decides that they actually want to fund up for the next one at review?
Well, the situation is that Hobart have not yet, they didn't decide to leave before the deadline, and so they will remain a member while they conduct the review. In terms of the other regional councils, I understand that most of, not all of them at this stage have agreed to stay. And I know that five of them have at least, but some of them may not have had their meetings yet. Alderman, you.
Edmond.
Edington.
No, I almost, I almost said Ewington, but I was saying. I'm not used to staying up this late.
Is there, is there a design, planning, or other reason that there is no fencing on the Kangaroo Blade Playground considering the proximity of cars and water?
Sorry. Mr. Graham?
Through, Mr. Mayor. It was part of the original design that there was no fencing. It did actually come up in discussions near the time of the opening. There's been no further change.
Blomley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Pierce.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I'd just like to raise with Mr. Graham, Lander's Court outside number four, the road has been sinking now for some time. I'm not quite sure why. Could I just have an update on what is happening there?
In the weekly briefing report, please. Alderman Walker.
Thank you. I had a discussion today with what I would think any municipality would describe as a dream ratepayer. Someone that was having money directly debited from their bank account, I think every fortnight for their rates contingency, was led to believe something like six or seven hundred dollars a head in their payments, happy days. And they've been told that, that they were told that this wasn't something that could be done ongoing, and they were given a refunded amount, and there would be no further ongoing direct debits. Can you enlighten me as to whether there's been a policy or whether I agree?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to actually get the details in the individual case, but I'd like to do that outside of the meeting if you don't mind in terms of what I don't want to sort of be referring to specifics in terms of.
We could deal with that question.
We can do that, but in generalities, there has been direct debits in pass. Is that clear?
Do you want to add to that or?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Recently, we did contact a number of ratepayers that had emergency credit. Some of those were as a result of their direct debit arrangements. We advised the ratepayers that they were in this current situation, and that if they would like to have those funds returned to them, that they were able to do that, and if they would also like to cancel their direct debit arrangement that may be causing them to be in credit, that they could also do that too. They were also advised in later that if they had any concerns or if they did not want to change any arrangement, that they would contact my rates department and discuss their requirements. So, there's been no change in policy. We've actually just done an extensive review of various balances, and we're just wanting to, I guess, not assume that every ratepayer is aware of the current financial status, and although they're not really aware of it, it's kind of like that many things have funded council.
Can I just add to that? Most of these would have been set up as direct debit arrangements where people have had significant arrears in the past or problem meeting their rates. They've struck, we've struck up a payment plan with them. They've continued paying with that payment on the basis of that same payment plan even once the arrears are finalized, unless they change their banking details.
Can I just clarify?
They go into credit.
Look, coming out of this, and if I could have assurance that people will still be able to continue to pay by a direct debit or credit.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That is absolutely correct.
So, what they've been advised to do is make an adjustment rather than cancel the arrangement or not being available to them.
That option is entirely up to my opinion.
You offer to sell them a lottery ticket, Alderman Pierce?
Showed it to me, and I said, "No, it is true. It is a true council record."
All right. Thank you. Another question, Alderman Walker? Alderman Ewington? Alderman Kendy?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and this one's maybe a little different, but I just wondered, given the fact our city is growing and progressing at such a wonderful rate, what information do we have on the number of homeless families in our city? And I'm sure plans are already being put in place, but could I have some information on plans, but providing an additional shelter for children?
Mr. Tui, are you able to help us in that regard?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'll take that on notice.
Can I understand that we actually don't keep data on that? So, in taking it on notice, we'll have to source that information through one of the other agencies and try and see what we can, what we can provide. But we, as part of council's operation, don't have access. We don't collect that data and don't provide, don't actually provide emergency shelter accommodation. So, we probably just don't have a feel for it, so it will take time to get that information.
And I have two questions. The first one relates to transparency. Some councils are in the practice of the, during the general manager's communication or in the weekly briefing reports, of identifying which developers, for example, have had meetings with general managers and/or with mayors. And I'm just wondering if as part of your commitment to new consultation and transparency, whether we're going to see something similar occur here? In other words, that your diaries would be available, you know, would be reported on?
Next.
Well, I'm quite, I have nothing to hide, and I'm quite happy to be open and transparent as possible. But if I run into a developer in a coffee shop, does that count as a discussion? I mean, you've really got to somehow or other make a.
Diary.
Sorry?
I did say your diary.
I'm happy to make my, run two diaries, one for council and one privately. I'm happy to do that.
And that diary will be exposed?
Sure. No problem at all.
That's all right.
Alderman Blomley, it's not appalling.
It is appalling. It absolutely is.
Look, let's not interject. We're going around doing questions at the moment. I wonder if we should apply that to Alderman, though. We all make our diaries available.
Let's all do that.
We seem to have a discussion about a question that was answered, right? I'm happy to participate in that discussion and point out that the premier's diary is available. But all these diaries are available for people who meet with them. Minister's diaries are available.
Let me qualify my answer, Alderman Mulder, and say, "I'll make mine available if you'd make yours available."
I'll show you yours if you're shaking on it.
All right. Second question.
This relates to Hobart City Deal. We've been told it's a good deal. We've been told not to look a Trojan horse in the mouth at one stage, and we've also been told it's a dead deal. What actual projects does Clarence get out of the greater Hobart City Deal?
They're romantic. Thank you very much for that. I can't be specific at all other than to say, I simply don't, I don't have enough detail in terms of being provided. What I can say is there is, there is funds identified in the city deal for road projects on the Tasman Corridor. Do I know specifically what they are? No, I don't as I stand here now. Can I say to you specifically what is in there for Clarence Council? No, I can't.
The GM doesn't know.
I might add to that, but.
You can use as much of the city deal as I have, Alderman James.
Look, let's stop the chat. The fact is that the city deal is meant to be a framework which identified some packages of money and some broad concepts and projects. The detail is to be worked out over the next six months with an implementation schedule which will detail exactly where the money's going. For example, we know that there's thirty, twenty-one million dollars, I think it is, for the Tasman Highway within the city of Clarence. Now, at this stage, I don't know whether it's going to be for phase two of an earlier project on access to the bridge or whether it's going to be for enhanced access to Rosney Park. That sort of detail is still to be worked through, and it was identified in the city deal that an implementation schedule is going to be put in place, and that work is not yet started, I think.
There's been one preliminary meeting, but nothing at all in terms of the concrete detail.
Okay. Alderman Chalmers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few years ago, council undertook a report looking at electric vehicle charging points in Clarence. And at that point, we decided to not do anything because Eastland at that stage was looking at putting in some charging stations. They don't seem to have eventuated, and I just wondered what the status was and whether we were going to look at anything going forward.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that is correct, that Eastlands were going to, but I don't believe they proceeded with that. We'll need to follow up, and I'll come back to council with something through the briefing report.
Any other questions?
That brings us the closure of the open meeting, so I'd like to thank the three remaining members of the public who've endured the journey. And it's our motion to go into closed session. Thanks, Alderman Pierce, second to Alderman Blomley. All those in favor? Thanks, Alderman Pierce, second to Alderman Longley, all those in favor. Karen, unanimous.